Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our town council meeting today, Tuesday, March 9th. And I would like to take a moment before we proceed with our conference agenda to acknowledge the fact that we are a year into COVID and have lost so many residents. And the town council colleagues and myself will be having a discussion with the administration and some other stakeholders in the community with respect to moving forward with some honorarium. Today, we did unfortunately lose another resident, and I'd like to take a moment of silence and wish his family support, peace, and may their memory give you comfort. Thank you. Today, I have asked the mayor to join us to give us an overview. Council will not be taking any action on this, but the mayor has agreed to give us an overview of a subdivision at Rock Spring Golf Course. As some of you may recall or may not recall, when the purchase was made, the discussion about a subdivision was had at the time. The purpose of this subdivision is to be able to apply for green acres funding, hopefully sooner than later, my perspective, but I will ask the mayor to address us in that regard, and I'm sure your public comments will be considered. And at a time when the administration is ready to present any plans with respect to development, then we will have a workshop. The mayor has asked for us to have a town council workshop. It is a public workshop. There is public comment, so we'll be able to advise of that at a later time when the administration is ready. At this time, is the mayor on with us already? I know he said he was lying on. Oh, there he is. Sorry. How are you, Mr. Mayor? Welcome.
Can I just do the opening statement?
Oh, yes, please. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the township clerk's office on November 16, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 25, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Mayor Perici?
Thank you. Mayor, please.
Great. Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity, and I apologize. I struggle with this every time I'm on a Zoom. My glasses kind of reflect. So for those of us that wear glasses, it's hard to find the right position, though I don't look like my eyes are glowing. So I apologize about that. I do want to just comment on your opening remarks about COVID. You mentioned we are a year into this. In fact, this Sunday is the year anniversary since our first COVID case. And Councilwoman Williams, as well as, as you mentioned, all the council is looking to do something. We're going to do something probably quick this week, some sort of video, and recognizing and respecting the fact that we're still in a virtual world. But certainly with the support of the council and discussions with the council, the township will do something in the coming months when, when, you know, thankfully, COVID will be behind us to commemorate what we've gone through as a community and obviously to remember all those that were impacted. So thank you, Council President, for bringing that up tonight, and for all the council members who've expressed interest in doing something appropriate. And when that time comes, obviously, we'll do that. So on to, on to, you know, maybe more exciting and maybe happier discussions. Want to just mention quickly and then thank the council president and Councilman Rutherford for putting a call together today with the developers of the Edison Battery Project. And obviously, the township is anxious to look towards Phase 2 and what that could bring for the, for the community. We had a really good conversation today, and though I'm sure the council president or Councilman Rutherford might want to talk about it later on, you know, the battery building is picking up again after struggling with COVID a little bit, top to 80% now, really strong rents still and renting at much quicker pace. So we're pretty excited about that. There's also a lot of exciting things that are being explored for, for the retail space. And obviously, collectively, as a community with council, we'll hopefully come up with something good for Phase 2 and get, get shovels in the ground as, as quick as we can. There'll be a lot more discussion with the council, with the public about that, I suspect, in the coming months. So here today to talk about Rock Spring, and I appreciate the opportunity. So honestly, this is something that's been long overdue. We had hoped when we had those lengthy conversations a few years ago about purchasing the club, both with the council and with the public, we had thought by now we would have a more formal plan, ready to present to the council, ready to present to the public, ready to make a green acres application. But really, one thing has prevented that from happening until now, and it's actually a good thing. The, the fact is that the golf course as a public course has far surpassed anyone's expectations for popularity and success. So if you recall, the administration was really clear in what we envisioned, and that we kind of thought we would convert it to a nine-hole course. That's not unprecedented. There's a bunch of nine-hole courses even here in Jersey that are very successful. So that's kind of what we were thinking. And then we would think that we would develop the rest of it and monetize it to replace the tax revenue, create some public uses, kind of create some interesting spaces, but keep golf. But, but the fact is, the numbers are off the charts. And I know the council gets the reports, and John Gross can talk a little bit about that later on. But that's really what's kind of changed what we envisioned and why we haven't really come up with a solid plan yet, mainly because, if you recall, the acquisition, the course itself is 140 acres, actually 138. And for you golf fans, that's, that's a small golf course. Most golf courses, even in suburban areas like Essex County, are going to be 180 to 200 acres. So when we decided, and when we all felt it was best to keep it as an 18-hole golf course, that does not leave a lot of land left over to maybe do some of the things we had talked about, and, and again, to monetize it, to kind of recoup some of the money in the acquisition costs and replace some of the tax revenue. So that's really why we've, we've come into, you know, some of these challenges, and more importantly, this delay, and why we haven't figured out how to subdivide it yet to, to create the plan and ultimately to make the green acres application. So we do think we're really close. And Council President, you mentioned a special workshop meeting, and we are, we think by, by Monday or Tuesday of next week, we'll, we'll be ready to commit to that date and make a full presentation to the council and to the public as to what, what we're thinking makes sense to move forward. So we really just need another week to do that. But, but I do want to assure the council and, and assure the public that we're going to honor the commitments we made. So we knew in 19, when we were, I guess, early 18, it even started, when we were exploring the idea of buying this, we knew it was a, a big ask and a big step for a local government to take. But, so we tried to be very clear with what we thought and what we anticipated to be the intentions. We, we always said that a piece of it would be developed because we wanted to recoup some of the money, the acquisition cost. We said there would be a road that would probably come off of Northfield. This way, we would alleviate the traffic that goes through the Rock Spring, Raynor, and West neighborhood now. And we committed to the public and to the town that there was not going to be a pilot. Forget about when we do believe that a pilot has value. We, you know, we did not want this to, and the plans for the future of the course be diluted with the discussions and the concerns and often controversy over pilots. So we committed there wouldn't be a pilot. And we're still committed to live up to that. We're going to, should the council agree with what the count, with the mayor and the administration are thinking, we're going to subdivide the property so we can make the green acres application. So we're going to live up to all those things we committed in those very open and lengthy conversations we had with council and the public about buying this course. It's just a matter of now trying to figure out how to do that while keeping the course 18 holes, not really changing the course, because there's significant value to the, to the Raynor design, but squeezing out enough land to monetize a little piece of it and get the traffic off of Rock Spring, make a green acres application, make the clubhouse viable for dining and maybe even for entertaining venues as well. So we think, again, with a couple more days to, to figure out a few of these details, we're going to be able to live up to those commitments we made, but still, but still carve out a little piece of the property to, to generate some money, get some acquisition costs back, and then ultimately to submit the green acres application. So I appreciate the time for update, I, I think, and, and I hope that the public wasn't disappointed and maybe looking for the more thorough conversation. Today, we're just, we're still not ready. We do think that that really warrants a special meeting where the council is not distracted with a full agenda or other items. We, we liked the council president's suggestion of having the special meeting for executive drive, and we'd like to do that again, hopefully, maybe by the end of this month, maybe the latest first week in April. But we're, we're going to be ready soon, and, and we're looking forward to a lengthy conversation. But for those members of the public who are here tonight, and for those council members, you know, just so everyone knows the comfort level, we're going to keep it 18 holes. We're not going to ruin the course or the integrity of the Raynor design. We're going to present something that will take traffic off of Rock Spring and out of the Raynor Western Rock Spring neighborhood. We're going to plan on protecting a lot of the property, an overwhelming majority of the property, by submitting the green acres application for getting some of our funding back and long-term preservation, but, and create some space that will be good for dining and entertaining long into the future. And, and again, to, to get some of our money back. So we're, we're pretty close to being excited about the idea and the project that we have in mind. We just need to figure out a few more details, because as we all know, to come up with a plan, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, whether it's the logistics of the roadway and utilities and, and ultimately traffic light on Northfield reconfiguration and the affordable housing component that's required. So parking on a very small property. So there's a lot of things there, but we think we, we're close to finalizing them. And with the council president's permission, certainly by Monday or Tuesday, we'll look to work with you and, and schedule a date for a public work session and full discussion about the future of Rock Spring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's something that I certainly look forward to. As you know, I had a, it was the largest decision I've had to make three months into being sworn in as a new council member, and it was not an easy decision for me to make, but I think it was the right decision, and I still support that. Could you just, for, for those members of the public who want to know better about the analysis that was done, council did approve an analysis be done by a golf expert. Can you talk a little bit about them?
Yeah. So we've, in addition to the consultant that, that the council has supported in the administration, having since we bought this to kind of keep an eye on with that expertise, we have, with the council's consent, had some studies done. We have an architect. So they've all told us what we, what we, I think, all wanted to hear and hope to hear, that, that the golf course is in great shape, that a Seth Raynor design is really a value to have now on a public course. And, and that's been some of the challenges in getting to the point we're at, trying to figure out the best way to do the things we committed to, but not ruining the integrity of the course. And I, and I think we've done that. So one hole will have to be moved, but only slightly. So we, we think in our architect, and he'll be part of that public meeting, so the council can, can hear from him as well. We're going to protect the integrity of the course and, and the Seth Raynor design, because that seems to be what the public, and Kemper can talk about this, you know, at that time, too. People are coming from far and wide to play Rock Spring, and they're coming consistently. They're not just coming once, they're coming back more and more and more. So we don't want to do anything that's going to ruin that. But we do think, consistent with what we had said right from the beginning, that, as you mentioned, $12 million is a lot of money. In, in all my years in government, it's the largest single bond the town's ever done. So we have to recoup some of that, if not all of that. So that was always part of the plan, and we think that's important to have part of the plan. And, and we also have to replace the revenue. So this year, the township's take, if you want to call it that, is, is a good number, but a lot of that has to do with COVID, because their expenses were so much lower. So it's not going to be that number every year, but it's still not going to replace the revenue that was lost. And so we, we think those things are important, and they were always part of the discussion, but we're, what the study and what the architect and what David Kronheim has said, and even Kemper, you know, who's managing 100 courses nationwide, that they see the value of, of what we have. And we're going to, we're going to be sure that anything we present does not do anything to jeopardize or ruin the integrity of the Seth Raynor, the Seth Raynor course.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor, for taking the time. I don't know of any of my council colleagues. I see some hands raised, but public comment will start a little later. And so for those members who are raising their hand, right now is not the time for public comment. Did any of my, Councilman Rutherford, I see your hand raised.
Is it possible, thank you, Council President, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your presentation. Is it possible for Mr. Gross to give us what the revenue and profit numbers were for last year?
Yes, to your, and he can answer for himself, but I just wanted to just make a point to say that I did ask Mr. Gross to please share those financials as well on the website. And I saw that he, late this afternoon, asked that to be done. So, Mr. Gross, I'm sure can share that.
Yeah, I can go over the, the numbers. There was, in terms of revenues for the year, the revenues were 2.6 million. The, the expenses.
John, please repeat that. I'm sorry to interrupt and fade it out.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, the revenues for the year were almost 2.6 million. And the total expenses were 1.56, leaving a million 21 left over. Now, out of that 1.56 included payments to the township of 125,000. So, so before the profits were, delivered to us, we had gotten the first 125, and then we just recently received the waterfall check, which is the, the breakdown of the remaining profits of 417,593. So we're right at 500 and, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm reading the wrong line. Our total is 603, 603,000.
Obviously, Council President, council members, that's really exciting. That's a great number. I just want to reiterate what I kind of mentioned. We don't anticipate, although the course is doing great, I'm not sure it's fair that we anticipate that profit percentage in the future. There, the expenses for operating the course were way down this year because they really just provided golf. There was no, no food, no halfway house. You know, they kept expenses down and really just opened up the golf course, given COVID. So expenses generally, I think, realistically would be higher than that. So we do expect to continue to do well as the course does well. I think this year, the high level of profit is more a product of lower expenses because of COVID than, than anything else. So we do think we're going to do well year after year, but I don't, I don't want the council to expect a half a million dollar windfall next year. I think that's going to be a little, that most likely be a little less realistically.
Yeah, I also think it's important to keep in mind that the, the cost of this to, to us, what, what's we, once these bonds, if we were to continue and have to pay off the $12 million, between the loss in revenue taxes from a go of a taxable property to a non-taxable property, paying the bonds, you're talking about a net expense of well over 1.2 every year. So while, while 4, 5, 600,000 sounds pretty good, it, it's, it's still far off from where we were, so in terms of cash, cash flow in this, in this project.
Thank you. Mr. Gross, is that it for you, Mr. Councilman Rutherford?
Well, part, part of what he said faded out. I, I, I think I heard him say just at that last piece that we would, you know, when you make this calculation, you have to consider the fact that we're, we've moved it from a taxable to non-taxable property. So we lose about a 600,000 there, and then we lose some amount with regard to bond service. I, I don't know that I would put those two numbers together, you know, but I, I understand, I think I understand his logic.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Council President. I am very excited about the net profit that the course has generated. But I would also like to take this opportunity to inform those who may not be aware, our public, that our general manager, Chris Parker, who manages this property, also was the award-winning recipient of Kemper Sports for all the courses that they managed throughout the company, throughout the hundreds of golf courses in the country that they managed, that right here in West Orange, Chris Parker was identified as the general manager of the year. So that speaks to our course being a public course, the management of that course, and I would be remiss if I did not identify the fact that he is the only black general manager in Kemper Sports. So in all of the gross profits that we have benefited from as a community, I also want to bring to our attention that the management in and of itself is an award-winning establishment. So I, I would be remiss if I did not bring that to the public's attention. So I want us to know that in addition to the profits that we have been able to acquire during this COVID pandemic, this course in West Orange is also the award-winning course for Kemper Sports. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for sharing that bit of information. It makes us all proud to have that benefit as well. Do any of my other council colleagues have any, Councilwoman Castellino, I see your hands.
Thank you, Council President. And, and yes, to Councilwoman Williams' point, Chris done a phenomenal job coming here. They actually called him in because we had a little rough start, and he came after a few months. But, Mr. Gross, my question's for Mr. Gross. Can you provide us with those monthly reports that we used to receive? I think that would be helpful for all of us, next month, starting next month?
I, I will. I was under the, under the understanding you were receiving them. So I'll, you should be receiving them every month.
Okay, great. Yeah, I haven't seen one in a while. So I'm not sure if that's me, but I don't recall seeing one.
Okay, I'll, I'll check on it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank the mayor also for this. And I'm thinking that as the weather warms and as more and more people get vaccinated, though you're saying their expenses may be increased, I think the revenue will also, we're also going to see more in revenue as well. Looking, answering, I know I copied you on emails that I have received from residents. I don't even believe Kemper has done any of the marketing. I mean, they've done some, but not nearly as much of the marketing that they intend to do because of COVID and, because of COVID, really. So I just anticipate continued growth in revenue. And yes, the, the expenses may increase, but I still think we're going to see a great product here.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. And I have to agree with you on that. I'm looking forward to that. Mayor Perici, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Trank, I see you.
Thank you very much. And again, obviously, I do want to echo what was said about the general manager, because he is contacted all day, all times, day and night, seven days a week by the mayor and by the police chief. And Mr. Parker is incredibly responsive. In addition, one of the things that's made this unique is, you know, they have an app, and everyone, when they leave, gets, reviews it, and all those responses are made available and responded to. But the second part I want to make clear, that's really important, with success comes use. With use comes, I'll use the word beating up the course. So one of the things you have to keep in mind, and one of the aspects of when this is presented to you in a work session, is, is the concept that we know the bunkers are in serious need of rehab. We know that in order to avoid weather downtime, that if we could complete the card pass, that would allow, because when we have, that course has some, we'll call it saturation issues, that we knew when we bought it. And again, you can't, after heavy rains, when the golfers all want to go out, you can't let them have cards. So that cuts down on revenue. So there are definitely one of the things, as we go into the next phase of Rock Spring, that Mr. Kronheim, that Kemper, and the architect have said, you know, if, as we plan for the next 50 years, we hope of success, we have to realize that there will be an investment that goes with this, and that's why we have to do this in a macro basis. So we're, that's part of why it has taken a little more time than the mayor wanted, because we, every time you push on one end, there's something else that comes up. And, and the mayor wanted it to be as global as possible, but we're looking at it all.
Thank you, Mr. Trank, for that heads up. Certainly appreciate that and anticipate that conversation as well. Thank you, Mayor, for taking the time out again to meet. Certainly appreciate when you join our council meetings and look forward to the dates so that we can publish them on the website and share them with the public. Look forward to the conversations and next steps.
Council President, will you be picking the date with your colleagues? Because then I have to line up the kind of cast. So as soon as you and your colleagues can give us a couple of weeks, so we'll do that.
Sure. So, so we'll start looking at dates for, within, so not this week, but the following week, right? Okay. So we'll get some dates together and, and share those with you so that.
Last week of March, we'll, we'll make ourselves available. Yeah.
The last week of March. Okay. So if we can all look at our calendars later, before we're off today, we'll.
We already have a council meeting the 23rd, so if you really want to push it to the following week, which would make that, I guess, the 29th or 30th.
The 30th.
So we can stay in March, but if, if that's better for the council, we'll make that work.
Okay.
But you.
That would be excellent. Then Ms. Carnival can post it on the website. We don't have an issue, you know, it can be on Facebook, and then I can line up everybody for that night.
Yeah, we just have to be careful by the end of the week, because it's Holy Week that week. So just if you do at the beginning of the week, Monday, Tuesday.
Is everyone, is everyone on the 30th right now? Sorry?
Yeah. That's what I was going to ask. Is everyone available for the 29th or the 30th, which is a Monday or a Tuesday?
I'm good.
I can only do the 29th. I cannot do the 30th or any other of that week.
Yeah.
Okay. So does that work for the administration?
Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. I have to, I have to.
Board of Ed Night, right?
I have to, no, the 29th, I am not here that whole week, and my sub is already, there's a, a meeting that is on the 29th for the planning board, that they, a special meeting. So my sub is taking over on the 29th. So I don't have anyone, if you do it on the 29th. And the, the license is already being used that day. So we wouldn't be able to do it then. And I, I would have to see if it's the 30th or any other day, if my sub can take over, because I'm physically, it's my spring break, so I'm actually not going to be here.
Good for you.
John, internally, John Gross, you still?
We got Ms. Brill. She did a great job last time.
John, you're, you're on mute, John.
If you set a meeting, we will, we will.
But I thought we were working on perhaps getting a license that we needed ourselves. Did we finalize it?
Getting the license is not the issue. It's, it's getting someone to run it with the, but it, but it, since it's going to be a special meeting, I think, you know, we're going to have less of the back and forth that we have during regular meetings. So we, if you decide to have it that night, we will, we will handle it.
Council President, I actually have in another organization, a Zoom webmaster, who I use on a consistent basis, who is excellent. So I do have some additional resources if we don't have someone that's available that I can certainly provide.
Thank, thank you, Councilwoman. Okay. So if it's, if we're all free on the 29th, and then the, the administration can internally set that up, that, that works, and we'll give the public enough notice, post on the website, and get that information out there.
Thank you.
We'll be prepared.
I need to ask, excuse me, Council President, I just, Lauren, Lauren, when you mentioned a special planning board meeting, did you mean the West Orange Planning Board meeting? I, we don't, I don't have anything on my agenda for that.
It's not officially announced yet.
Okay.
So it's a possible meeting date in case, it might not be planning, it might be zoning. I may have just gotten that.
Okay.
Wrong. It's very confusing with all of the dates. I think it's an extra zoning, not planning.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
And, Council President, what worked last time well, I thought, was maybe it started a little earlier. So what time?
So we started, we started at 5:00.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, great. I, I'll line up everybody for March 29th at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so very much. Okay. Perfect. Thank you so very much. Okay, West Orange, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. West Orange, we are now going to have, it's 7 o'clock. For those council members who have liaison reports that they want to share, please indicate so. Raising your hands. Councilwoman Castellino.
Yeah, Ms. Brill is going to handle the Downtown Alliance activities, but I just wanted to give a quick plug. We had a ribbon cutting yesterday and congratulations to New Business in Town, Create, Cut &amp; Craft, to Teresa Kalinsky. Her business is located Eagle Rock Avenue in the Walter Baman's Building and be ready to sign up and go with a few friends and create some craft. So we welcome a new investor to our community and happy to have her here. Also, the PR Commission will be meeting this week and we'll be working on some new activities for this year. And just want to congratulate Lou Presoccio, 32 years of service. He retired last week. He'd worked for Department of Public Works and he kept all our cars safe in the, in the community for the police force and firefighters operating our town garage for many years. So congratulations, Lou. That's it. I'll keep it quick for you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to Lauren Van Dyke and Noelle Perez and Dorothy Sanders, the health coordinators, for that beautiful Valentine's Legacy of Love Letters that they put out, the program, seniors writing letters to our youth. They're very touching and interesting and full of advice. I want to thank the Fire Department for their annual report and to keep them safe. The Police Department for Operation Blue Angels. I shared a post from the Police Department and so many people have already liked and shared the page. And the West Orange Arts Council, there is so much going on there, so I'm just going to ask everyone to visit woarts.org for the exhibits and workshops that are going on. I would like to invite everyone this morning, the West Orange Chamber met by Zoom, 8 o'clock this morning. We are having our next Biz 2.0, next Wednesday on St. Patrick's Day, March 17. This will be at 1:00. It will be a St. Patrick's Day Parade of Business Owners. A meet and greet, it's free. Go to westorangechamber.com to register and meet business owners that are in our town. And we have quite a few new registered chamber members. So that's on westorangechamber.com. And the West Orange Environmental Commission, each year I always talk about the Earth Hour, earthhour.org, please visit that. That is Saturday, March 27. But we always, as a commission, launch that event. That's going to be on March 24, where we have a series of guest speakers. They will all be videotaped. And then thank you to our moderator, she will put all of that, splice all of that together so that that will air on our local access channels on state legislation and local projects that students and the commissioners are working on. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. Just a very brief update. Open Space Rec had a very good meeting this past week and we are going to allow the town council to decide how to proceed with regard to any changes at the pool. So Open Space Rec is not going to pursue that as a body, but they have encouraged the council to take a look at the fee structure and see what, if anything, can be done to be more accommodating to lower-income residents. Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting. You can find the link on our town website, westorange.org, and look forward to seeing you guys tomorrow night. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Council President. As for my updates, I would like to notify everyone that the Rent-A-House Board met on last evening and, and we have excited to report that the second round of COVID vaccination shots have been administered. 127 shots were administered, 108 of those were second shots. And then there were a few residents who also received their first vaccination. At the Rent-A-House Board, we have formed three new committees and that is a Tenant Relations Committee. Also, in addition to the Tenant Relations Committee that has been formed, we have also looked at trying to make sure our residents have some type of opportunity to voice concerns. So with that, Rosary Morelli is leading that charge and we are very excited to say that they're excited about receiving their shots and the new guidelines that have been released by the CDC indicating that if you have received your COVID vaccination, then you can relax and be a little bit more comfortable in co-mingling in community. Also, the West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition will be holding an informational meeting on March 21st at 4:00 PM. That is our Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition. So if you're interested, please make sure you avail yourself. We want to make sure that West Orange is safe. Also, very excited to announce that one of our residents, Dr. Janice Johnson-Dias, has released a book, Parent Like It Matters: How to Raise Changemaking Girls. That was released on March 2. Books are available at all local bookstores, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Nobles, and we are promoting the Source of Life Bookstore purchases direct if you would like to have a signed copy of that book. And we will be having a talkback sponsored by Jack &amp; Jill of America Incorporated on March 20. That is an invitational event and all you do need to do is purchase one of her books or purchase a book to receive admission to the talkback. Also, again, just acknowledging that our looking at my notes, I apologize. Our, we have a meeting tomorrow with our Historic Preservation Committee at 6:00 PM. If I'm not mistaken, 6:00 PM and information is on the website for that meeting. So if anyone is interested, please feel free to join that meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, you're muted, Madam President.
I was having, I was having trouble unmuting that. That was so odd. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, and I'm seeing the time, so I am just going to just publicly thank Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill and Senator Ruiz. We had a roundtable meeting this week that discussed the vaccination among those underserved communities and how we're going to move forward to raise awareness in that regard. So I really thank them for their efforts in making sure that, along with the county, that we're able to partner up and, and work together to make sure that everyone is vaccinated. So Madam Clerk, I would like to go into the public portion of our meeting.
Madam President, before we go into public comment, if I may just acknowledge to the public, the Life Christian Church on Thursday will be holding, the Essex County will be the location for the Essex County Food Drive. So if there is anyone in need, that will be available on Thursday.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Matu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk and Madam Moderator. Can you please instruct the public on how to access public comments?
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, this is now the time. If you'd like to speak, it's the Raise Your Hand function located at the bottom of your screen. And if you're one of our call-in listeners, it is star nine. You do not have to wait for anyone else to stop talking in order to raise your hand. You will be put in a queue. I know that you had said that you have Ms. Brill speaking during public comment. Is that someone you would like to take first or last? Is that?
Yeah, has she raised her hand already?
She is raising her hand.
Yes, please.
Okay, so Meg, Ms. Brill, if you can.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Megan, welcome.
Do you, I know that she's presenting something. Would you like me to promote her to a panelist to be on screen? Because she also asked if she could share her screen. Is that something that you'd like? Okay, so Meg, just hold on one second. I'm going to bring you over as a panelist. Don't do anything to her computer. And then, I don't know if it's going to be a timed thing, but she's going to be sharing her screens. There's going to be no timer, so if you wanted me to take timer off camera?
Yes, please.
Okay, and then I'm just going to ask Meg to start her video.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
How do I start my video? There we go.
There you go. And yes, you can share your screen as you need to.
So I wasn't sure you guys would get to me so quick. Share screen. Okay. And you see my shamrock?
Yes.
Great. So we have two things. First, I'm Meg Brill with the Downtown Alliance. I have two things I want to share with you all tonight. One is a great scavenger hunt that we're doing downtown. Joe Fagan and I have placed 25 shamrocks throughout the downtown corridor from Eagle Rock down to the valley and they are pretty visible in our storefronts. We're asking that the public find all 1 through 25, take down in a spreadsheet. There's a PDF on the website and a Google Doc for you guys, that Google Doc. And take down the name of the business, where they are located, their address, and what they do. And submit that sheet before noon on March 19 and you'll win, you can win a chance. We're going to put you in a, in a raffle to win $100. We're going to do a big reveal at 3 o'clock at Benji's on, on Friday, the 19th. So that is that. All the information is on our website. It's on the township site. We're going to post it up on TV 36 and 20 and 45 as soon as I send the note to Lauren tomorrow. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, and actually, some folks already know about it. We've been talking about it for a couple of weeks and that is, let me, it's our signup for our newsletters. We've partnered with the township and the Chamber of Commerce and, and downtown. You know, we, we do a lot of our advertising and information is given through Facebook and we do a pretty good job at that. We, we're getting better at Instagram and the last piece of that is our newsletters. And I know for us downtown, we probably have, you know, 1,500, you know, folks that we correspond with, but we're a township of, you know, 48,000 people. So I partnered with the Chamber and the township and we created a URL, wosignup.com, and you can pick all of the newsletters or just, you know, whatever ones you like and, and you'll sign up and then you'll get added to, I think, the Chamber and I do monthly and the township does a weekly newsletter. So it's a great way to get information and there'll be links and, you know, definitely the one place that you'd want to go to get all the information that is out there. We're trying to be a one-stop shop. And the Shamrock Search will also be in the newsletter if you sign up for it. And the Downtown Alliance is moving their meeting. We're supposed to meet on Wednesday, the 17th, but I really wanted everyone to go and support, you know, all of the businesses that are, you know, still struggling even with capacity issues. That it's St. Patrick's Day, it's a great fun day to be with your families and close friends. So we're moving our downtown meeting to the 16th. So it's the same time, it's just a day before and all that information is out there. We, I sent it to Ms. Carnival to properly notice it and we're updating everyone that wants to come to our meeting. That will be, will be on Tuesday and not Wednesday. That's all I have for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you for all of the work that you put in to make sure that downtown West Orange, that community group stays informed and I see you work all the time, so certainly appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I'll bring a birthday cake to Benji's on Friday. I'll bring a birthday cake for you on Friday for Benji's.
That's right. Joe and I share a birthday, so it's always, always fun. Thank you.
All right. Don't touch anything on your computer, Meg. I'm going to switch you over. Thanks. Okay, let me just move her over. Okay, great. And let me just put back up our handy-dandy timer. Okay, great. So next up, we have Henry Johnson. If you can please follow the prompt, that's going to be on your screen. Don't worry, you don't have to be on camera. You'll, you'll stay off camera. And if you can give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Henry Johnson, 22 Rock Spring Road.
Good evening. Welcome.
I just want to stress, we were led to believe that the golf course, when the township first was going to purchase this property, that it was going to be a green acre space, they were going to take away the golf course in two years, just a bunch of things. And, you know, I just felt at that point that, you know, we had no other option but for the city to buy it. I just want to stress to the council and even the mayor, if he's still listening, that, you know, Rock Spring Road has become just a freeway for the golf course and, you know, very dangerous. And, you know, we, I think as a group, want to see Rock Spring as a dead end and, you know, the entry put on to either Northfield or Walker Road. We don't want to have probably any access because even trucks coming at, you know, in the morning for deliveries, everything is just causing a real headache for Rock Spring Road itself. So I just want to kind of stress that for the next meeting because I think that's, you know, our biggest issue that we're going to have on Rock Spring. I mean, we were led to believe that, you know, it's, you know, the town buying would be a great thing for the area. But I see now that, you know, look, the revenue is what it is. You know, you haven't started paying on the debt yet, so that revenue is going to drop. It'll probably be in the hole. So I understand selling off pieces of the property will be beneficial for the city, but we just want to stress that, you know, we don't want it to be in the detriment of Rock Spring Road, Rainor, or West Route.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Henry Johnson.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, can I have one more thing? Also, with, with the golf course, they do have a tennis court and a pool. I'm just wondering why they can't implement that or open that as part of, you know, added value to the tennis court itself. I mean, a lot of us would play in the tennis, I mean, they're not even maintaining a tennis court now, so it's kind of an eyesore. But if they, if they, you know, open it up to, I guess, the public, you know, I would definitely play every other day if I could, even the pool. But I think, you know, just to open it up for other people that don't play golf, because a lot of us do not play golf, we'd like to have other things available to us and since they do have a tennis court and a pool, it'd be great to have those things open.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, and council will respond at the end of public comment. Thank you for sharing your comments and thoughts.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Joseph Fagan. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, Joe?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Joseph Fagan, Public Information Officer. I would like to talk briefly about a new program. I would like to talk briefly about a new program instituted by our West Orange Police Department. And Councilwoman McCartney touched on it briefly before. Information about this program has been recently posted on the township's website and social media platforms. And it is also posted on the West Orange Police Department's Facebook page. I speak about it tonight to inform residents about this program named Operation Blue Angel. It demonstrates not only how the police department protects and serves the community, but it also shows how they care about those they are pledged to protect. This program is designed to provide additional peace of mind, especially for West, for the West Orange senior community in the event of an emergency. It is designed to assist West Orange residents who might be at risk of a medical or life-threatening emergency when the resident is home alone and unable to get to the front door. Participants in Operation Blue Angel are provided with a free and secured lockbox, which is affixed near the front entrance to the home. This device is similar to what realtors use and is usually placed directly on the door's handle. A key to the resident's home is securely stored in the lockbox. The confidential access code is only known by the West Orange Police Department and will not be shared on the air. In the event of an emergency, a police officer will access the lockbox and use the secured key to accompany medical personnel into the house. This program allows fire and EMS to quickly gain entry into the house with a police officer in the event of a medical emergency without unnecessary delays and without potential damage due to breakage of windows or doors. Although participation is voluntary to be eligible, a resident must be over 55 years of age or live alone with a specific medical condition. More information regarding eligibility and conditions can be found on the website and the West Orange Police Department's Facebook page. On a deeply personal note, I would like to add these closing remarks. I urge anyone listening to consider this program for your loved ones. I'm speaking from the perspective of experience. In 2003, I was an hour away from West Orange and sensed something was wrong with my father. He was living alone on Moore Terrace at the time. I had to give the police department permission to break into the back door. It was just a screen door and there was only minor damage, but it wasted valuable time. An officer found him lying on the kitchen floor after suffering a stroke. I had arrived unseen just in time to ride with my father in the back of the ambulance to St. Barnum's Hospital. As it turned out, it was our last ride together because he passed away shortly after. As is the case with most medical conditions, time is of the essence. The West Orange Police Department did a great job with my father in 2003. But quicker access to a person under these circumstances today could save a life. Before my father passed away, the final exchange of words between us was, I love you. But this was something we told each other often. So I urge everyone to consider participation in Operation Blue Angel, which will provide many families peace of mind and potentially save a life. And finally, never pass on an opportunity to express your feelings with a fellow family member because the everlasting peace it will bring you will leave a deep touch, will be touching upon your heart. Thank you, Council President. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Joe, for sharing such a touching story and for your suggestions. Thank you so much, Joe.
Hey, thank you. Oh, I saw Harvey Grossman raise his hand, but then he put it down. So I don't know, Harvey, if you want to re-raise your hand, if you have anything. Okay. Harvey, if you, if you follow the prompt on your screen, did you have something?
Yes. Firstly, you know, I want to go back to the, I want to go back to the schedule. Because March 29th presents a problem for the Jewish community.
Excuse me one second. Mr. Grossman, can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Harvey Grossman. I'm the public advocate. Now, the problem I have with the schedule is that March 26th is the first night of Passover for the Jewish community. And it's a holiday that generally runs the entire week. So it presents the same kind of problem as Holy Week presents for Ms. Castellino. And so I would like to see, see the matter moved a week later. The other thing is I want to remind the board that in the fall, we have Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. And going forward, the, the town's schedule has to accommodate these two holidays. Now, my wife is a co-president of Bene Shalom. And she would be happy to assist you so that you can, in the future, avoid conflicts with Jewish holidays. Now, I want to, I want to, I want to address the Rock Spring proposal. Firstly, I, I do believe that the change or the, rather, the revenue that's been generated by the Rock Spring Country Club presents an opportunity to restructure the deal so that we can be self-financing. This is important because the residential development component was solely for the purpose of financing the transaction. And the incredible success, success of Rock Spring. I understand that there were 21,000 rounds of golf. And as Mr. Gross indicated, the revenue was $2.5 million. This was without any promotion on the part of the town. And the overwhelming likelihood is that the income generated by Rock Spring should substantiantly increase. So for that reason, I think you have to have to address whether the residential development component is not necessary. Clearly, we're dealing with changed circumstance, a positive development. Now, if we can avoid the residential development, this allows us to protect the integrity of the golf course. And it is consistent with the township policy of maintaining open space. Now, there are many different ways, I believe, to further increase the development of Rock Spring. And you have to remember that the income that is generated by Rock Spring is non-taxpayer income. It is an income to the township, which is not generated, which is not generated by taxation of the residents of the township. So.
Mr. Gross, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Thank you. Okay, um, I don't want to butcher this next person's name. So I'm going to say Christopher. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, moderator. My name is Chris Petosha, 24 Woods End Road. Thank you also, Ms. Council President and members of the council. This is my first experience speaking this venue, and so I wanted to thank you for the opportunity. And staying with the Rock Spring discussion, I'd like to just take a moment to underline the points that I outlined in a memo that was distributed to the council and the mayor on behalf of myself and a fellow West Orange resident. And I'm pleased to hear that many of those points have already been commented on this evening by both mayor and the council. So for those listening who may not be aware, it's important to understand that Rock Spring is an historic property due to its architectural heritage and the quality of golf that it offers. And this is all the more special now that Rock Spring is a public property and a true asset to the town. And that's as compared to the private golf that is so prevalent in this area. So with that having been said, and as others have already mentioned, in spite of the high number of rounds that have already been played, there's very good reason to believe that there is additional, excuse me, monetary potential that has not been fully realized by the course. And beyond this, further intrinsic value to the town with Rock Spring as a recreational centerpiece to its portfolio of assets. Both those that are wholly owned and wholly operated by the town and those that are shared and operated in part with Essex County. And so as a personal example of this, I wanted to offer my own experience as a participant in an event this past fall at Rock Spring that drew over 40 golfers of the most committed variety from as far away as Connecticut and elsewhere who traveled for purposes of seeing and playing this property and who are likely to, if not have already returned to play additional rounds there. So with a full understanding of the original intent of the town's purchase agreement, I do look forward to further participation in the supplemental workshop and further opportunity to comment on and help ensure that the council understands the full value of the property that the town now owns. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so very much for your comments and for reaching out to the council.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have Claire Silvestri. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Claire Silvestri, 20 Grandview Avenue. I just wanted to thank the council for listening and acting on the public's concerns about ordinance 2637-21 and tabling that ordinance, which would reduce the time allowed for an individual speaker at public comment at the last council meeting. As someone who often takes most of her five minutes to provide facts and background supporting my position, I am grateful for the council members' change of heart. Now, I won't take nearly that much time this evening, but I just wanted to make a request of the council president. Could you please include in the conference agenda going forward, any special discussions or presentations by the administration? I know that that's been done in the past. I had heard that Rock Spring was, was going to be brought up at, at tonight's meeting. And as a result, I was looking for, looking through each of the agendas, the updated agendas that were sent out through the Agenda Center, center about Rock Spring and saw nothing. I'm very interested in this property and have a lot of, a lot to add on this subject. But I did not know that it was going to be discussed during the conference agenda. Had I known, I would have been on at 6:30. Instead, I logged on at 6:45 and I missed the entire entirety of the mayor's report. So I just ask, I'm sure I can watch it on, on the videotape. But I just ask for, in the future, I think this is the second time that something was discussed at conference agenda that was not placed on the agenda that I missed. So I would really ask the council president, if going forward, she could include this kind of information on, on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestri. Absolutely.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have James McFarlane. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, hopefully you can hear me. My name's James McFarlane. I live at 3 West Road in West Orange.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I'm also in the vicinity of the Rock Spring Golf Club. Not too far from Mr. Henry Johnson, who commented earlier. And thank you, thank him for his comments. I certainly agree with his concerns around the traffic that has increased heavily around the golf club. I live pretty, pretty close to it. So I've seen it in action daily, how it's been going. And definitely would agree there are a lot of positives there and that it's, you know, being used well. Looks like it's run well before COVID. Managed to use the facilities there, like for food and certainly very friendly staff and agree with all the sort of praise that Kemper seemed to have got. But for our neighborhood, that certainly, you know, comes at a huge cost of, you know, the traffic and turning into, you know, a freeway, I guess, of some sort is a very narrow road that, that Rock Spring road. And I thank you to the mayor for sort of highlighting the need to kind of take traffic off that. It has, you know, a very sharp dip that you go around a bend. It's blind. At one point, this was too dangerous for the school bus to go down and come up. And so that was sort of called off for a bit until they sort of slowed that down. So there are no footpaths either there. So, you know, for, for kids or anyone like that walking a dog, it's quite dangerous. For golfers, you know, they start very early, right? And they finish very late in the day. So there's really, it's like unrelenting. They do Monday to Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So as soon as the course is available, and my understanding is that it's in more use. You know, now it's in public hands because the Kemper, you know, they want to make a lot of money out of it, which is fair enough. And so the rounds are booked, you know, as soon as the snow melts, you know, people play, I've seen there, like in frigid conditions. So I definitely think that's the continue or increase that the need for that sort of separate access road is, is paramount and that, that, you know, the, the current access road be closed off like completely to, to any traffic for the golf course. So that would be my hope. And it sounds like it's, the plans would be something along those lines. But I really, that's what I'd be looking for. And I know a lot of people in this area also looking for that. My second point would be around the clubhouse. And I certainly agree, I think it was Christopher, about the historic nature of that clubhouse. It is, you know, quite a pretty building, has a beautiful lake there. Cable Lake and, you know, in the past, it was ice skating and things there. There's certainly the whole, the trolley and things that used to come up there. Thank you, Mr. Joe Fagan, for writing all the books and the history about that. Really enjoyed, you know, reading his stuff about like that area in particular, you know, right near the entrance to that Rock Spring Club since I've moved to the area. So, you know, in a new development, I know that's obviously like a really good part of the land, being in a beautiful view. It'd just be a shame if that building and that area where, you know, it's possible potentially for the public to access is lost. Just a luxurious development or something where it is, you know, big gate and no one can like also enjoy that. So without knowing the footprint of any sort of building or plans or even the subdivision, going to be open-minded at this point. But, you know, hopefully it's something that not just, you know, golfers can access or people that paid for a wedding or something there. And it's, you know, it's something for the community there. But they have that kind of separate road, as I sort of mentioned in my first comment. So I certainly support the development, but really keen on that road being closed off and like this still being some non-golf use of like the property in particular, you know, the nice view area and the historic nature of the club being kept. So I think that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Henry Johnson. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record. Lori, did I already have Henry Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson already spoke.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I did. I have two more points, not, not related to Rock.
Unfortunately, I'm sorry, it's only one round for the public comment.
Oh, gosh. Okay. Next time.
I'm usually pretty good with that. Next, we have Joe Krokowiac. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. It's Joe Krokowiac, Grandview Avenue. First, I congratulate council members for their decision at the last council meeting to drop efforts to restrict public comment. Council president moved to table the authorizing ordinance on second reading, and everyone agreed. She indicated the intention was not to bring it back. I salute council members for listening to constituents who, if public comment in Facebook or any indication, were quite opposed to putting any limit on their ability to speak to their elected officials for up to five minutes. It's not easy to veer from a path which you've begun the journey, but in this case, the council collectively remained open to input from constituents, to further consideration of the proposed amendments and to changing course. Thanks for doing your job and doing it so well, and in my opinion, acting in the interest of our community. A second, I follow up on my efforts to get answers to questions relating to the Executive Drive Municipal Library Redevelopment Initiative. At the February 22nd Council Workshop, I asked a series of eleven questions to Town Council. My questions were ignored. If you have time, you can replay the video of public comment. At the last council meeting, I asked a pared down list of these questions and added two new ones. I also raised the issue of the council members and administration officials ignoring my questions. But again, none of the questions were answered in public comment. However, to Councilwoman McCartney's credit, she was the only one who did finally respond. She said that according to her notes, all my questions were answered at the workshop. I'll note that she didn't say what those answers were according to her notes, nor did she respond to the two questions that I had asked a few minutes earlier. After replaying the public comment sections of these two previous meetings, I can say definitively that no answers existed for her to repeat. I raise this issue once again for two reasons. First, the questions I ask go to the heart of the proposed Executive Drive Financial Agreement and Payment in Lieu of Taxes, basically the financial impact on taxpayers for the next thirty years of the agreement. For example, Mayor Parisius told the council and residents that Ten Rooney Circle, which the redevelopers proposing to transfer to the town, is worth between six million and eight million dollars, except that his administration negotiated a tax appeal settlement several months ago that put the building assessment of the property at less than 2.6 million dollars. By state law, the assessment reflects market value. So which is it? Is it an up to 5.4 million dollar windfall for taxpayers? Or is it a huge gift to redevelopers? The question remains unanswered even after I emailed the assessment documentation to each council member. A few of the other questions were answered elsewhere in the council meetings, primarily due to the efforts of Councilman Rutherford, who in my opinion is the only council member using the council meetings to provide a balanced pro and con picture of this deal to residents attending the meetings. I also raised this issue again because just as in the proposed ordinance amendments that would have restricted residents' public comment freedoms, the fail to answer resident questions has the exact same impact, in my opinion. Both impinge citizens' rights as per the U.S. Constitution's First Amendment guarantee, quote, "to petition the government for a redress of grievances," end quote. Council meeting public comment is one of the very few forums where residents who are interested can convey their opinions and seek information in a forum where everyone who so desires can watch and assess the performance of their elected officials and in that way, hold them accountable. So for example, do they even know the answers to the residents' questions? Or do they make any effort to get the answers? Are the answers they give correct? Do they appear to understand the many complex issues facing them? Are they trying to make the issues more understandable to residents? Can they explain why they support a particular vote? These are the elements of accountability. Each time a resident asks a question that is not answered, it should reflect negatively on each council member, and I believe it does for many residents. So I urge each council member to rededicate themselves to doing their best to answer each question raised by residents at public comment. I'm sure many residents would be most grateful, and I believe you'd be doing a better job at serving. I just also, in my last few seconds, just want to add two things. First, I wanted to encourage everyone to review the proposed resolution for the executive session to make sure that it is specific enough to meet the state requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. I'm not sure that it does in the copy that's on the town website. And I'd also like to better understand, I also was late to the meeting, so perhaps this was explained, why the Rock Spring presentation by Mayor Parisi was not on the conference agenda. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, next we have Mel Valdez. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Mel Julie Valdez from Elm Street. Thank you. Good evening Township Council. I have a few questions that I would like answered. Hopefully you will be able to answer them tonight. I would like to know regarding the Rock Spring project, what is the deadline to apply for the Green Acres funding? The mayor briefly presented today at 6:30, but I feel that there weren't really many concrete details provided. So will these details be presented onto the township website in order for us to have access to that before the proposed workshop? Also regarding the workshop, is there, is it possible to make the workshop possibly in April instead of March? Because it seems that between Holy Week and also the Jewish holidays of Passover, there is a conflict. So I would appreciate it if you would take that into account in terms of scheduling this meeting and also making it accessible so more residents can be available. What I would say is for your last workshop, you did a very poor job of advertising this, and it was very hard to find on the township website. And also, it wasn't presented on Facebook, even though, you know, I will say now for the Rock Spring, Rock Spring presentation, council president Matute Brown did finally list that on Facebook. What I would also like to know is regarding the, the status of the Main Street Battery Development Program, Development Project, is the council going to discuss what the status is of that project? When is phase two going to start and what has prevented phase two from starting? Also, regarding the documents that were presented on the Township Council Agenda for the tax assessments for the Rock Spring, excuse me, not the Rock Spring project, the Executive Drive project, is the council going to discuss the tax assessments? What I would like to know is why is the township not appealing? Or not, basically, it looks like you guys are making a deal with this, with this developer to withdraw their complaints, since now they're, they're saying that the assessed value of the property is not what it was. I see here the figures that the, for Ten Rooney Circle, at first, the property was assessed at about six million dollars, and now they're saying that it's assessed at six, from six to two million dollars, which is a big change. I would like to know, I would like to see the council discuss this as to why is the township just providing a deal instead of challenging this? Because that's tax, tax money that we're losing out. And what, what was the reason for the change in the assessment? That's, that's a big change from six million dollars. I see here the documents state that the township tax assessor assessed the properties in 2018 and 2019. Ten Rooney Circle was assessed at six million, three hundred twenty-two thousand. And then here, it says that the settlement is now for two million, 2.4 million. So, you know, I would like to see this, this discussed, you know, why was this, why was this deal made? Because it seems like as a township, we're losing out on, on this money. And it seems like you, instead of challenging this in court, in tax court, the township is just deciding to make a side view. Oh, and also lastly, I would like to address a comment that was made by one of the council people. It was stated that residents need to put their money where their mouth is in terms of funding for the library, the three million dollars. Not for nothing, that comment was just very condescending because as a resident of West Orange, I've lived here for many years, and a lot of us have lived here for many years. We're a very hardworking community and to say that, that somehow the residents need to come up with three million dollars, I feel like that's a laughable comment, and it's something that shouldn't have been said by a council person. So I really think that you should reevaluate the things that you say. Because, you know, people are listening to the comments that you make, and it's just not appreciated. It wasn't a helpful comment.
Ms. Valdez, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. And this will be the final call for anyone who would like to speak. It's the Raise Your Hand button located at the bottom of your screen. If you're on a tablet by chance, you don't see it, you just swipe your screen and it'll appear for you. And if you are one of our call-in listeners, it is star nine, and you just have to press it once, you'll hear a robot lady's voice talk to you. And just one last final call, because I always find that when I say final call, there's always one at the last minute. Okay, great. And that's all we have for public comment. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Can you just, for the public's sake, I know that last time, we did ask if the public could see how many participants are on. Are they able to see that?
It should not have changed. Let me just make sure. Okay, it was not in the, in the default, so I just did do it now.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
We just had someone raise their hand. Can we take that person?
Yes, if they have not spoken, yes.
Yes. David Hyde, I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce your last name. Give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. David Heidi, 42 Gregory. Sorry, it took me a second to find the hand button. Thank you, everyone, for doing this. I think I just want to echo a couple of comments. I've emailed Mayor Parisi. Luckily, I've stayed employed but working at home and have been able to participate in Rock Spring, like golf events there with friends. I do just want to echo, one, the historic nature of the course. It is a course that many people, Seth Rayner, for golf nerds, is very important in the golf design world. Not many of his courses are public. People come from everywhere to play. I've played with them. People from New York, out of town, bringing business to the town. Potentially, who knows, crystal balls, but we're at the start of a historic, like a golf boom. And rounds played, I think nationally, we're up 12%. We know what, you know, I think rounds were up significantly for Rock Spring. I don't have the numbers in front of me that Mayor Parisi shared. So I think to redevelop part of the course and destroy the historic nature of it at the cusp of potentially a multi-year resurgence of golf is a mistake. I think there's other opportunities. I really encourage the town council to either find the competencies within the town or employ them elsewhere to really think about this as an asset in a business. There's many opportunities. I think pricing power is something you guys have to look at. I don't know how many more rounds can be played. There was probably six weeks where there was no rounds played last year and also limited capacity after that in May. But I really would encourage you guys to think about this. I recognize other residents, I don't live on that street, totally get those concerns, so I think that's a challenge to oversee, but I would really encourage you guys to think, think about this, excuse me, as an asset and not to destroy it, because I think once you start tearing up, you know, holes and redesigning, it just takes the value out, and you're not going to have people come and play a not Seth Rayner, a half hybrid Seth Rayner course. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'll email you all my concerns, but I appreciate allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi.
Thank you. I'll just give a nice final last call if anyone would like to speak again. Okay, I think that's all now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so very much, Ms. Moderator, and to the public who joined us and shared their thoughts and their comments, certainly appreciated and taken under consideration. And there are times where the council does not have a response, but does try to give a response when that response is obtained. So I will do my best to answer the questions or touch upon some of the things that were brought up tonight. To Ms. Silvestri's point, apologies for not having that posted on the conference agenda. I did do a round immediately, social media with respect to, and I know that you're, you follow the social media circuit. So I did try very hard to make sure that that made its rounds, but it is duly noted, and apologies if you just found out about it, but I tried to post early on last week, as soon as there was confirmation. To all of the golfers who did share their perspectives, I want to just reassure you, and I know that some of you have reached out via email, and I have provided responses to you, but for those who are not privy to those emails, I wanted to share that last year, the council did hire an architect by the name of Kyle Franz, and he's a golf course designer and is well-known for not just designing golf courses, but for maintaining the integrity of historic courses. So I say that to say that it is something that is certainly on all of our radars. We want to maintain the integrity of, of the historic value of Rock Spring. I know when they did the analysis, they also included the review of the 1928 Plan and shared it with council. I have asked the mayor if we are able to publicly share that document. So I'm hoping we can do that for your review, but I, again, I say that to say that we are certainly considering and being very cautious on how we proceed with respect to the historic value in the golf course. And with respect to Mr. Harvey's position on the funds that were generated, the revenue that was generated, it is a different time. COVID, a lot more people were home from work. Very happy that we were able to have such a successful year, but there are death service that we do have to pay, and this was initially the discussion, and I know you were a part of those discussions as well. But I certainly look forward to, I don't want to put the parpy for the horse, if you will, but I am looking forward to the discussions that the mayor and administration and the presentation that they will make to the council. I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I did want him to come on and let everyone know that this is a discussion that is happening and when it's happening. Let's see who else with respect to the golf course, that's all I'll say about that at this time. I do hope, Mr. Henry, I know you, Mr. Henry Johnson, you spoke earlier and mentioned that perhaps there was a misunderstanding with the initial intent of purchasing the golf course. As the newest member at the time on the council, my real, two real concerns for me were the fact that we were losing such a great amount of ratables. If we didn't purchase and the county purchased, because they were interested. But also, the other concern was if a developer purchased it, the ratables would have probably been quite high for us, but the quality of life for all of us in town would have been drastically different. So for me, as far as I know, the intent was always to parcel out a part of the land to, to either have senior or age-restricted housing, so it doesn't impact the schools. So again, I just wanted to clarify that that's always been the discussion as far as I am concerned. Mr. Krokowiac, I don't have the eleven questions that you asked, but I will go back and look to see what those questions were. I'll sit and listen to the videos and hopefully be able to respond to your questions that you posed that went on unanswered or not answered to your satisfaction. And to Ms. Valdez, with respect to, I was a little confused with your comment with respect to the the deals to make the taxes. I'm so sorry. I tried to write very quickly what you were saying. deals to make the taxes. I'm, I'm so sorry. Um, I tried to write very quickly what you were saying. But the fact of the matter is that when there are tax assessments and there is a settlement on the tax i- in, in, in these matters, they do happen in court. We do have, um, um, matters that are pending still, um, in tax court. And typically they're either settled or they get carried on for some time and then eventually settled. Sometimes, um, the assessment is raised, sometimes it is lowered. Um, in this case, I, I, I'm looking at documentation from the court that I asked the, um, the administration for when we were discussing this. And their, their assessments and tax appeals from two, 2010 that were settled after six years. And it isn't uncommon that these, um, matters take as long as they do in tax court. So I, I, I do also want to stress that during this time, there were 26, I believe it was 26 and Councilman Krikovjak was a council member at the time, um, of, of, um, different business, commercial businesses that filed for appeals. So it wasn't just executive drive. So I, I want to stress to say that it's not these backdoor deals. And, and you may have not used that terminology, but I, that, that's what I heard. And I, apologies if it's not what you intended to say. I will leave that there and ask, um, my council colleagues to follow up. Um, Councilwoman Casselino.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before I go to Rock Spring, I'll stay on the topic of these, uh, of the reassessments. Maybe Mr. Gross could touch base, because I believe the vacancies, the reason for the decrease is a 58% uh, vacancy rate. Is that correct? Mr. Gross, can you explain, uh, to the public, um, in your language, uh, 6 million? Why the 6 million fell to the 2 million for the assessments? And, and again, they went to, it was, uh, it was court. Uh, we have our attorney that goes to court and represents us. So maybe he could touch base on that for us in a little more detail.
Which specific property are you referring?
This is, this is the executive drive.
I, I can answer that, Mr. Gross, in part and whatnot. So, so what, what what that reflects is that when we entered into the redevelopment agreement, the initial redevelopment agreement, we knew that as a result of the litigation that was pending, it was going to take time to get to a closing. And therefore, there were tax appeals that were pending. Those tax appeals were settled as a result of the global deal. And basically the agreement was because we were basically putting those properties, uh, in pause or on hold while we got to a closing. Uh, and the agreement was the assessments were going to be lowered. But part and parcel of that agreement provides that if, for whatever reason, this does not come to fruition, everyone reserves all of their rights as to the tax appeal. So in that event, the tax appeal would be restated. As you correctly stated, the council, I think the president just stated, these things go on for years and then everybody will have their rights. And then there will be the actual valuations that occurred. So again, when, uh, Mr. Krikovjak asked about the numbers or anyone else asked about why the assessments are currently fixed at the current number, it's because that was the interim arrangement without prejudice as to everyone's right. Recognizing that as a result of the initial redevelopment, uh, and the proposed redevelopment tonight, that the properties will transition to ownership by the township.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trank. And what is, uh, Mr. Gross, what is a deadline to apply for the Green Acres Grant?
This year's round, number one, has not been announced, so we don't, there is no deadline set at this point in time. It's our understanding that the state is going to try to do a round this year. This is the year that we, but, but it hasn't been announced yet. So, um, the, the, uh, one of the reasons that we're trying to get as much of this done and decisions made on this is so that we, once, once, uh, we make those decisions, we can be prepared, uh, to make those applications when, when the time comes. But right now, it's not the deadline. The, the program has not been initiated for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And there was a question, Ms. Valdez, in regards to phase two. Again, administration could jump in here. Um, you know, we haven't moved public works yet. We're working on that. And, um, and also the economy. You know, I, I'm not sure where exactly the plan is. There may, uh, there'd probably be a change in it from the redeveloper. So that's why phase two hasn't been, uh, moving forward. But we do have to work on, um, moving, uh, public works out of that, that, that site. And, uh, I know the mayor's been working on that amongst many other things. As you heard this evening, we have a lot going on. So, that's, I'll comment on that unless, you know, the council president or the administration has anything else to share on that. In regards to the meeting, uh, Mr. Grossman, I, and my apologies, I'll double check. I work for an Orthodox company. I thought Monday would be okay. But we should probably move, if anything, that meeting back to a later time, uh, past sundown. Because the first seder is Saturday night, second one is Sunday. And, you know, we could double check this, but that's, you know, from my memory from, from, uh, my, my work, uh, from my office. So, um, we, we should double check that to make sure that the public, um, of the Jewish faith, uh, could, could attend our meeting that night. And, uh, and I'm, I'm flexible. We always are flexible. We try to, you know, we try to think of everyone. And regards to Rock Spring, so, um, Council President, I'm glad you spoke about the golf architect. Very important to us to keep the integrity of that course. My husband, uh, is an avid golfer and I hear about it all the time, uh, the beauty. And we do recognize, uh, it is a shorter play. I think I have the terminology, uh, correct, uh, than some other courses. And, um, folks travel from, from all around to, to come visit it. And, uh, I agree, Mr. Heidi, that I, um, that there'll be more golfers more than usual, because more and more people are working from home. So they have that more flexible schedule to sneak in a few rounds, even if they go later in the day. And, um, so, you know, that's why I asked for those monthly reports. I like to track it, see how things are, are going. Traffic is an issue. I've been in contact with the, um, with many of the, the neighbors since this started and, uh, still keep in touch. And I thank all the neighbors for coming out this evening. I know you've been concerned wanting to, um, see what we could do to, um, you know, slow down traffic, uh, in that area. Problem is, it was a private course, so people were used to the neighborhood. And since we went public, um, more and, uh, more people are from out of the area. So they don't realize probably when they first enter the neighborhood, kind of the turns and twists in the roadway. So, um, as they visit back, hopefully they are, uh, abiding our speed limits and being safe for, for the neighbors. Um, let's see. But to make a road, you know, that's important to us, as the mayor mentioned earlier. You know, we, we need a developer for that and that would pay for that roadway. So I'm looking forward to that, uh, meeting, if we, you know, the workshop, whether it's the 29th or if we have to move it. But I'm looking forward to that and the information. And I thank everyone for coming, uh, down to speak about it. And we'll talk about more about the redevelopment when we get there. Uh, Joe Fagan, a beautiful story about your dad. You know, um, thank you for sharing. And, uh, Megan, thank you. And the downtown lines for all your hard work. And Joe too, getting those sham racks out. I hope a lot of people go, I encourage them to go to the Hine, come visit our downtown businesses, uh, shop local. They all could use your support. And please sign up for the newsletter, W O sign up dot com. So I think I covered everything on my list, Council, uh, President. And I think I checked off all of the questions that all our residents may have had. My colleagues could, uh, um, follow up as well. Thank you, Council President.
And thank you always for picking off, uh, picking up where I left off. Uh, Councilwoman McCartney.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to say how much I appreciate the comments of Mr. Johnson, Mr. Grossman, uh, Mr. Petrosia, Mr. McFarlane, and, uh, David Heidi, also on Rock Spring. I am anxiously waiting to hear and see more. Uh, I don't want Claire or Joe to think that they really missed anything, because tonight's meet, tonight's presentation really wasn't a presentation. As you stated, it was really an overview, uh, from the mayor, um, not, you know, details. But he knows the pulse of the community. He knows how the council feels about this. So I do, um, I appreciate the comments, but I am anxiously waiting to hear more. And that brings me to the point about deciding on a, uh, time and date for the, uh, for this workshop. And Claire makes a point about putting that on the conference agenda. I think that definitely should, uh, should occur. Picked up my phone to put that. Of course, I didn't, um, realize about any conflicts with the Jewish holiday. That's not on our phones. We are usually very sensitive about that. When the municipal clerk puts out the month, the, um, yearly calendar, she has everything highlighted and, uh, brought to our attention so that we do avoid any conflicts. This was kind of spontaneous, so I do hope that we can avoid any conflicts when we set the time for the workshop, if it means moving it back a week. The only other comment that, uh, I have in my notes here, Joe made a comment, I'm sorry, Joe Krakowak made a comment about, um, an Oprah meeting the standards. I'm not sure I, if Ken or Richard want to answer that about what was posted, if that meets the Oprah standards. I, I wasn't, uh, I'm sorry, I don't have, uh, exactly what it was that he was asking, uh, on which resolution on that. And Ms. Valdez was talking about also the, the workshop and the conflict, and I hope that we can iron that out. Thank you, Council President. And Joe, thank you for your personal comments. And, uh, Megan and the Shamracks along the corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. And, and either, um, Mr. Kader or Mr. Trank, what, uh, Mr. Krikovjak, uh, referred to was the, um, resolution to hold, uh, executive session, which is 49 dash 21. He questioned the, um, format as to whether or not it was compliant with the Open Public Meetings Act. Can either of you speak to that?
Yes, obviously, on, uh, Saturday morning or afternoon or whatnot, when, uh, you directed me to put it on, we communicated with, uh, Ms. Carnival. She put it on, obviously, uh, especially our esteemed community member, Linda Stiles, immediately caught, uh, the mistake you called me last night. And I know Ms. Carnival said she corrected it this morning. So certainly, uh, it was, uh, as far as I understand it, corrected. And the notice is sufficient for the purposes of the Open Public Meetings Act. Thank you, Council President, for immediately bringing to our attention the, uh, mistake.
Thank you so very much for that, um, explanation. I hope it is satisfactory to those who, um, share their concerns. Um, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, thank you to all the residents that, uh, raised their voices tonight. We're certainly glad to hear your thoughts, uh, on these important matters. Uh, I'm going to take each one in turn. Mr. Johnson, uh, spoke about, uh, Rock Spring Golf Club and the access road. We certainly are sensitive to that. And that is, uh, a, a part of the, um, at least as far as I'm, I'm concerned, a part of my planning. I'm sure, uh, my council colleagues, uh, share that same concern to alleviate the traffic in the neighborhood. And hopefully we can do it in a way that makes sense, uh, given the historic nature of the golf course. I also, uh, was, um, struck by your comments about the tennis court and the pool. And I do agree that we can use those assets better. Uh, and so, uh, I will look forward to, uh, further discussions with my colleagues and the mayor to see what we can do. Uh, we have, uh, well, I, I have spoken, um, with several residents, uh, in the past regarding using the pool in particular for senior citizens. Uh, but there are quite a few options there and we certainly will explore them. Mr. Grossman, uh, remarked on the problem for our workshop on 3/29. If it can be moved back later in the night, I am certainly supportive of that. Um, and also if we have to move it to another day, that is holy week for, uh, my faith as well. So I completely understand, um, how this can be impacted. I believe in response to Mr. Gross's comment, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Grossman's comment, Mr. Gross remarked about, and I, I said something at that time, or maybe it was in response to my comment. Uh, Mr. Gross remarked about lost revenue, uh, and debt service at, uh, Rock Spring and tried to link those two in, um, saying that we need to kind of consider that as we look at the value of the, of the property going forward, and it may not be as profitable in the future. I think, um, the way we should look at that, the lost revenue certainly is gone, the 600,000 in taxes. But that should be compared with net income. I don't think we should add debt service to the lost revenue, and maybe I misunderstood what he was getting at there, but that's the way I took it. I think we should examine what we had before versus what we're getting now or what we can get now and, and project it out into the future. If I've mischaracterized that, please, uh, forgive me. Mr. Gross, do you want to jump in and, and?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just say that what, what I was trying to say and probably inartful. And what was that we were, before we got into, before we purchased Rock Spring, we were receiving $600,000 in income from that property. Uh, and that now that we've purchased it and if we decided to keep it for the long term and not, uh, we, you know, pay off and pay off the debt ourselves, um, in its entirety, we, we would be spending 600,000. So it's a, it's a 1.2 million dollar swing. That's, that, that's all I, the point I was trying to make is that, it, while, while, when you look at the revenue portion that we're receiving from Rock Spring this year, uh, and I, I agree with others that, that have said that this is a unique year and, and it'll be, I think it will be, um, a challenge to repeat that and certainly beat that. Not saying it can't be done, but it'll be, it'll be a challenge. If you're looking at that compared to where we were before, when we were contemplated getting into Rock Spring, which did, you know, the, as the mayor indicated, our logic when we got into it was, we try to get into it, preserve the golf course to extend as possible, uh, open space, pay off the debt and hopefully generate ratables that would replace the 600,000 that we lost. So that was the objective. Um, and so keep it in mind, that original objective. While, while it's, it's really great that we, we earned as much as we did this year, it doesn't get us to our original objective. So.
Got it. I, I, um, and I'm looking forward to getting the detailed, uh, notes on the revenue expenses, net income from the project. But based on what was, uh, said tonight, uh, in a COVID year, we did about 2.5, 2.6 million in revenue. We did about 1.5, 1.6 in expenses for a net profit of about $1 million. And if you back out the debt services, unless I missed, and again, some of that was not clear, it may be my wifi. But I think we had about a little over 600,000 in net income after all expenses. Is that not right?
That's not correct.
That's not correct. The, 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 first off, a million dollars in difference was split, you know, the, oh, only a portion of that belonged to us. And it was a, a little over 500,000, uh, that, that we got. Uh, and that does not include our debt service, which isn't paid as part of that. That, that's paid out of our budget. So the debt service is, is on top of that. And we don't spend, in fairness, for this year is not, because we're in temporary financing and temporary financing is lower. Um, if we were to, to, to permanent financing, it would be the numbers that I was discussing and, you know, over, over the long haul. But no, that, that, that profit and loss statement does not include our expenses. That was a profit and loss statement of our vendor, which included monies that they gave to us.
So that, again, the relevant part that I think, uh, with all due respect, Mr. Gross, is, is what you said, we're a million two in the hole. That's what you have to understand. Because we made the decision to buy the golf course, we start a million two and a million two in the hole means we lost the 600,000 that we used to get in real estate taxes. And we are obligated And we are obligated for six hundred thousand a year, give or take, on the bonds that we took out. So that's why, when the, the mayor and the CFO and you ultimately decide, we have a million two, we have to bridge, and that's before we get into capital expenses. That's before we get into, if we build a new road, how we find, you know, fund that. That's before everything else. So we are a million two in the hole on that course every January first, when, now that we owned it. Now that we own it.
Right. So when you forward the the income statements, please include a, a copy of the debt service schedule. And I'm sure that that's going to go out for the life of the loan, so that we can compare apples to apples.
So it's not, the life of the loan, our, Mr. Gross can clarify this, our one year, when our deal that we made with the local finance board, that they approved, and Mr. Gross can give us more, is we did year-to-year notes. Okay, so that we get, take advantage of the low interest rates. And then if we don't, and I think it's by the end of this year, decide what we're doing long-term, then we're going to have to roll it into a more per- permanent financing. But Mr. Gross can, can explain the nuances of that. But yes, all of that information is available, but give or take, between a million and a million two is our cost out of the box because of the lost tax revenues and because of the projected, as you asked, debt service that we will incur.
So, so this debt service that we're paying is that, and I know this is the problem, but I, I, I think it's important for the public to know. Is this an, is that an interest-only payment, or does that include principal as well?
So, so Mr. Gross is the expert, so.
We're, right now, currently, we're in temporary financing. So with temporary financing, we're only paying interest, or interest only. And it's a, it's a very, very low rate. However, once we go to permanent financing, on, and this is a, at this point in time, is a taxable note. Those taxable notes would have to be converted to a taxable bond. So you're talking about probably tripling the interest rate, and then you have to start paying back the principal. And the principal is somewhere between four hundred and fifty and five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So the, you add the interest on top of that. It, it adds up. And now, in, in terms of, you know, I can only give you a projection right now, because we're right now in temporary finance. I can tell you exactly what we're paying in the temporary financing. But the long-term financing is subject to the market changes and, and when we go out and how much we go out for.
Right. And, and, and just add on to that, Councilman Rutherford, part of the goal and why we got to two years, on top of, I don't want to forget to add here, we, this is also part and parcel, I want this to be very clear, in our fair share housing settlement, we committed to have at least thirty units there of, of housing, affordable housing. But, but again, the reason that we did it exactly like Mr. Gross said, and the council approved it, was because we were hoping to figure out this, we'll call it master plan, number one. And number two, once we figure out that master plan, Mr. Gross is getting, is reaching for the narcotics. Once we figure out that number, Councilman Rutherford, we're going to hope that we can successfully apply to green acres, and the most you can get from green acres is fifty percent of the value of what you agree to permanently deed restrict. So that's why, if hypothetically, of the hundred and thirty-eight acres on Rock Spring, we had estimated, it's going to vary, that we are hoping that fifteen to twenty, I think twenty acres might be developed as a result of the clubhouse and, and as a result of a residential development. Then we could only deed restrict the net of it, whatever that is, say a hundred and ten acres. And then we have to get a new valuations. Green Acres requires two appraisers, and then you apply and ask for fifty percent of that. That money, if, if we're successful, Councilman, would go to pay down the, I think it's eleven point five million dollar bond indebted as they have. So that's when it'll get recalculated as to what our yearly nut would be on the balance.
And, and, and understand if, if, let, let, let's just say, you know, we, we were able to get five million dollar commitment for Green Acres. If, that's, it's just a wild number, but if we were, that five million dollars might come in over ten years. So we have to float the financing until the state, you know, ponies up whatever they guarantee to us. So we're going to have to be concerned about how, you know, of the cash flow of this entire project for, you know, a, a good period of time.
All right. I think this conversation is better suited for the workshop. I just want to say, I, I know that you made a comment about the thirty units or so of affordable housing. I don't, I think if we're not building any housing, we're not required to put affordable units there.
Well, I'll be glad to discuss that with you, and will, and whatnot. If we don't do it there, then it'll put the, the, the requirement will be elsewhere in town. So it's part of our RDP and whatnot, but we can discuss it. It's, it's written agreement. And we have a requirement by July one to go back to Kevin Walsh and Josh Bowers at Fairshire Housing and have that discussion. But it's all, it's, it's, as in everything, it's a puzzle, and we got to fit the pieces together for the best interest of the town.
Got it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Petosha also commented on Rock Spring and the historic value of the property. And that is certainly highlighted in every conversation that we've had so far. And it is certainly my intention to maintain that, is that, in the integrity of that golf course. Because it is a separate design, and that has attracted so many people from outside of West Orange and inside of West Orange to finally play Rock Spring. Ms. Claire Silvestri, you know, I certainly understand your, your concerns, and we will certainly work. I'm, I'm learning, so I'm you know, I, I, I'm not even qualified to comment on when things go on the website and when they don't. But I do share your, your concern that everything should be there. Mr. McFarland also talked about the traffic concerns. Again, that's also going to be a part of it. Mr. Krakowak, I, you know, I apologize if I ignored any of your questions. That was, certainly was not my intent. And I, I, if there are any unanswered questions, please send them to me, and I will be happy to, to work on those. You know, as quickly as I can. Ms. Valdez. There were a couple of comments there that I wanted to respond to, and I think some have already been, so I won't reiterate them here. But her question's about Main Street development, and when Phase Two will start. Part of the delay in Phase Two, aside from moving DPW in the animal control facility, is that I have requested and tried to share a separate vision for, for those lots. It was mentioned earlier that Council President, Matu Brown and myself, had a meeting today with developers from that property as well as our mayor. And what we're trying to accomplish there is a project that will better meet the needs of West Orange, have more commercial ratables in it, highlight the, the history, the legacy of Edison, and do some things there that provide the amenities that folks in that part of town in particular need. So, you know, it is not that someone is hiding something. It's just that there's a process to go about these things, and at some point in time we'll be better suited to give you full details. With regard to the tax assessments on Executive Drive, I, I find that interesting as well. And I, I realized that Councilwoman Castellino, just a moment ago, asked our town attorney, Mr. Trink, if the reason for those tax appeals and the lowering of the assessed value was due to the vacancy rate. And while he answered the question, I did not hear that. So I would like to know specifically, is the, is the lowering of the assessed value on those properties due to the increased vacancy rate that they've experienced?
No, I, I keep in mind, it, it was dealt, it was part of a settlement, and it was presented to the council, and the council approved it. And it was an interim resolution while we dealt with the litigation and got to the fruition of the project. So it, it was not key to anything. And the reason that that is carefully constructed is if for any reason the redevelopment doesn't go through, the, the owner reserved their rights, and the council reserved our rights to then assert that, not the council, but the township asserted, reserved its rights to go right back to Jump Street. Because as, as Council President Matu Brown has correctly stated, this has been a decade literally of tax appeals. And, and so the tax appeals that pen, that, that the second round or wave of tax appeals that began in twenty seventeen, when the developer paid, as you know, fifteen million dollars for those four buildings, they filed immediately tax deals. And so those tax deals were pending when we did the first redevelopment plan in twenty nineteen. And that was baked into the settlement, saying that there were going to be no refunds given as part and parcel of this global redevelopment. But because we knew we couldn't immediately consummate that because of litigation and other aspects and approvals, basically, we said, why fight over tax appeals if we're going to end up owning one of the buildings, and there's going to be a redevelopment, because as part of the redevelopment, everything gets reassessed. So that's why we basically put it on hold. So again, it has nothing to do with the vacancies. It has nothing to do with anything other than a settlement. We've reserved all of our rights. The owner has reserved all of its rights, and it's all moot if there ends up being a redevelopment. If there ends up being no redevelopment, either as a result of your decision or of litigation or whatever else, then everybody goes back to their corners and will spend the next three, four, or five years litigating more tax appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Trink.
You're welcome.
And to, to the rest of your comments, Ms. Valdez. I, I understand the sentiment that we may be giving away too much to the developer. And that is why we have these debates, to try and get at the best possible outcome. I think debate is good. I think it's healthy. I think sharing of different opinions leads to better outcomes. And so I welcome the opportunity. And if there's anything that we've not considered in the debate, please send those items to us, either by email or phone, so that we can consider them and hopefully still get a better outcome. I think that was it. Mr. Heidi remarked as well on, on the golf course, but I think we've covered those. Oh, one last thing. I, I'm not sure where the comment. And I don't recall that comment. But, you know, again, it was two weeks ago. But I'm certain, I did not say, you have to put your money where your mouth is. I'm certain I did not say that. And I don't recall that comment, but I would be, I don't think the town council is trying to put on the residents. And I certainly would not be supportive of any one of us saying something like that to raise the three million dollars. And if that came from, it did not come from me. So I don't know if that came, if, if I'm misunderstanding, or if I'm just not remembering. But that, we, I think all of us are aware that that is not the residents' responsibility to raise the difference in some construction bond if we were to lose it. So I hope that answers all the questions. I thank you guys for indulging me with the amount of time I've taken.
Certainly, I appreciate the dialogue, and serves to clarify for the public, you know, the answers that are provided. Thank you so much, Mr. Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. The beauty of always having the last name of Williams is that most of my council colleagues have answered everyone's questions. So to that end, I would like to certainly just express my appreciation to each of the thirty-four attendees on tonight's call, in addition to the thirteen panelists from the administration and from the council, and participating in this evening's council meeting. So thank you. Thank you very much. This is indeed an opportunity for you to express your opinion, for us to hear your voice, and for us to respond accordingly. I would also like to remind the public, for those of you who are unable to attend these meetings, we do have communication via our West Orange Council website. So please feel free to reach out to us as council colleagues or independently. And for the most part, that can be done by our first initial last name at westorange.org. So thank you so very much for your time this evening. All of the Rock Spring questions have already been answered. And again, that speaks to, if any, at any opportunity. If questions have not been specifically addressed, reach out to us. Let us know your concerns. We're happy to respond electronically or via conversation. I'd also like to thank the Downtown West Orange Alliance for acknowledging the St. Patrick's Day Parade. That is one of our largest community activities. So for them to host a shamrock. Find, we appreciate your engagement. Also would like to acknowledge Women's History Month, and just say that this is the first time in our history where we have had four women as council members in West Orange. Eighteen sixty-three was our first council meeting. And for the first time in West Orange history, as we celebrate Women's History Month, here is to strong women. May we know them. May we be them. And what may we raise them.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams, did you freeze?
She did freeze. Lovely, lovely markup freeze. Hopefully it'll catch up. Yeah.
That was a great freeze. Absolutely.
Let me see if. Hold on one second. I'm just going to chat with her to see if she is totally, totally frozen.
Thank you. And while you're chatting with her, I'll just add to the public comment with respect to the comment that was made about whether or not council knows or answers in detail the questions posed to the decisions we make. Speaking for myself, my social media council page does have notes on there that I go into deep detail, including links and documentation that I review in advance of making these really large weighted decisions, including Executive Drive, including Rock Spring. So if there is a question, please always refer to my council page and/or call, email. There you are, Councilwoman Williams. You froze, and, but it was a good freeze.
Oh, no, she froze again.
I don't know what, I, I don't, I have no idea what, at what point I froze. So I will just continue to restate the, the, the statement that I was making, which is, we have four women elected to our Township Council for the first time since eighteen sixty-three, when I convened, when we convened our first Township Council meeting. So my salutation was, here's to strong women. May we know them. May we be them. And may we raise them. And so I will also just continue to reiterate some of the frustrations of my senior teen daughter. As, you know, she has exhibited her frustrations during the pandemic with internet accessibility and schools. So obviously, we see that this is a real concern. You know, so just, just letting the community know, you know, this isn't a planned event. We all want to be here. We all want to be present. So public, just continue to bear with us as we experience any type of technical difficulties. This should prove information positive, that, you know, we need, need to make sure that our children, including us have access and, and good connectivity. You know, my, my signal says it's a strong signal. So these things do happen in the world of technology. But again, thank you to my council colleagues. You all have pretty much answered each of the questions in the essence of time. I want to note to the public with the thirty-four participants that we do have on this council meeting this evening. Most of those answers have been already completed. We took one hour to listen to the public. We have taken forty minutes to respond to your questions. So we are in the interest of time, not limiting your engagement, your opportunity to ask questions and for us to respond, but we are responsive to your time. And we're doing our best to curtail our and we're doing our best to curtail our, our comments and, and address your needs. So again, please do reach out to us independently of these meetings. Feel free to email us, contact us by cell phone if that is your desire. We are available, we are accessible. Thank you, West Orange, for the opportunity to serve. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And that concludes our response. Madam Clerk?
Yes, okay. We're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
Consent.
Consent. Report of Township Officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent. Consent.
Resolutions, Council President, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I do not have any resolutions that I am pulling. Are there any of my council colleagues who want a resolution pulled, want to ask questions? Please let me see, where's, um? No?
I know she's, she's here.
Okay, I see her down below.
Okay.
I just, I just don't have everybody on one screen. Okay, so do any of my council colleagues have any questions or need any items pulled?
Not for me, Council President Sis McCartney.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. I see you nodding your head. No, Councilwoman Castelino?
Yeah, no.
No, Council, okay, so no, and Councilwoman Williams, no.
Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Ordinances on second and final reading.
I'm so sorry, Madam Clerk, before we move into the ordinances, is this the appropriate time to go into executive session?
Oh, sure.
Can I have a motion or a move to go into executive session as per Resolution four-nine-two-one?
I can hear motion.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Can I, I was, I, I was going to make a recommendation. I think Ms. Brill was going to speak on one of the ordinances, but if she, you know, she could wait, then I was gonna.
Okay, yeah.
Council President, I know we have a motion on the floor. It has not been seconded as yet by any of my council colleagues, but I was.
It was.
It was seconded?
Yes, Councilwoman McCartney did.
Okay, then, then yes.
Okay, so let me take a vote. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
And, and this is to go into executive session?
Correct.
Yes.
Council, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Council President, the way we've done executive sessions in the past, I'm going to circulate a dialing so we do it offline. And usually our great moderator plays Beatle music.
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to queue it up now.
No pressure, Madam Moderator.
Yeah, if this gig doesn't work.
Women's History Month, can she play a female band? I mean, the Beatles, you know, I mean, come on, come on.
I agree, you're right.
All right, Ms. Williams, what do you, what do you want then? Give me a band.
Beyonce works, Beyonce works.
I have to be careful with language and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Go to the clean version of Beyonce. Go to the clean, you know, come on.
So if, if each of the council people and other folks who will be in it could make sure you mute your phones, your, your screen or, or the moderator will.
Yeah, we're going to ask for everyone to mute not only their camera, but their audio. And I'll put a screen that says you're in executive session. And then when you guys are ready to come back, you pop on camera and that's how I know you're coming back.
Thank you so much. So are we, are we all back? Yes, I see everyone is back. Madam Clerk?
Ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-six thirty-eight dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection seven dash fourteen point three, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets During Certain Hours of Certain Days, and subsection seven dash twenty-six point one, Bus Stops of the Revised General Ordinances. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
This is the time for public hearing on this ordinance, if anyone has any comments?
I don't know if Ms. Brill was going to be on for this.
You know, I'm sorry, I second the vote to go into executive session because I realized that you wanted Megan to speak first.
Yeah.
Um.
She just raised her hand.
She's, she's here, she's still here. She was, would you like me to promote her to a panelist as well? Or just speaking?
Yeah.
Just speaking, okay. Ms. Brill, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please?
Hi, everybody, I'm here.
Am I timing this one as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did y'all have a specific question about the ordinance?
Well, Ms. Brill, maybe you could just share my colleagues because the last meeting, a few were concerned about who. The, the reason for this, for this change obviously is to help our business owners, but does this hurt any of the residents in the, in the area?
Yes. So this specific ordinance will address the Eagle Rock section. Most, if not everyone, that I know in that area, the residents all have overnight parking, whether it's in their driveways or in other areas, you know, in and around their driveways. So I do not expect that any two-hour or fifteen-minute parking would affect them. I would think that when they do take their car out in the morning and come back to the neighborhood, they unload groceries, they would have the two-hour freedom as everyone else in the neighborhood does to leave their car there and then move it along or put it in any of the designated areas. You can park at Bethany Church. There's a couple of different parking lots that are privately owned where folks that live on Main Street or near Main Street use as overflow parking. And there's also overnight parking at Quigley Lot. So he's right, right near where we're making the parking change. So I really don't expect there to be any issue with residents that would need to park their car on Main Street for any length of time.
And can you also share with my colleagues conversations you had with the police department in regards to enforcement?
Absolutely. The, the reason why we're, we're, we're talking about this again is that there are several businesses in the area that really need the changeover of parking. All of our neighboring towns really support their business owners with managing the parking better. And this is what we're trying to do with our ordinance. I did speak with Brad Squires and, and a few other members of the police department that we're hoping that posting the signs will help turn over the cars. We really need for them not to just pull their car out onto Main Street. Or what, what's really happening is the people that work in the neighborhood are leaving their car in the same spot for eight or ten hours. And, and that's what we're trying to avoid. Police have said that they, there will be enforcement. I don't know how much enforcement there, we're going to end up with. I'm really hoping that designated signs will really do the trick. As I said, especially in this area and in Torrey Corner, I know all the cars, I know the people that are driving the cars that are leaving them there all day. Absent this ordinance, they're just going to continue to do that. And we're really not giving our best service to our business owners that really need those cars turning over. The fifteen-minute parking handles the folks that are just running in to get takeout or picking up their shoes or dropping off, you know, a belt or something that, that they need. The Quick Mart is right there in, in the Eagle Rock section. So that gentleman really needs the people that are just going to run in to get milk and get going again. So we really thought about it. We spent, you know, a few hours with Mr. Lepore and the police and looking at what would be the best way to designate the areas and, and the signage and the ordinance accordingly.
Great, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Is anyone else raising their hand to speak for this, on this ordinance?
We have no other people raising their hand at this time.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, did we do an assessment of actually the homeowners that would be impacted by this change? If, even if they're located above the buildings, if they're multi-family unit dwellings as well as single-family unit dwellings impacted by this change?
So we, we had made, I'm not sure about the actual assessment, but we just created the Bethany Church Lot for the residents in the single-family homes across the street and for anyone on that, the end of the apartments there. I'm not sure if Megan wants to pop back on, but some of the other parking lots that, like little pockets in, in the back of some of the stores that have tenants have the parking, like the larger building, the Eagle Rock is, we all know the, where the Oak Barrel and Nicholas Anthony is, those tenants I know have parking in the back of their building in that lot. So as far as in Pacman, you know, I, I, as far as the police were concerned, and as Megan just stated, most of the people that are parking there all day are employees of some of the stores. And they could park in the Quigley Lot, too. There's parking available there for the employees.
The, if, if I may interject, the addition of the Bethany Lot was really to help the overflow traffic from Ashwood. The, the folks on Ashwood, most, most of the streets were only made for, you know, no cars or one car. So the overflow lot to the Bethany Parking Lot ends up being, you know, great service. And, and there is no single-family residence in this, this section of the downtown.
Thank you, Megan. Did any of my council colleagues have any additional comments or questions? Now? Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-six thirty-eight dash twenty-one?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Councilwoman, you're muted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Twenty-six forty dash twenty-one, Ordinance of the Township of West Orange, Approving an Application for a Long-Term Tax Exemption and Authorizing the Execution of a Financial Agreement with Green Essex Partners Urban Renewal LLC. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney? Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. All right, are there any members of the public who would like to speak at this time? Please raise your hands.
Hey, thank you, Clara Silvestri, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Clara Silvestri, twenty Grandview Avenue. I just want to speak, reiterating my opposition to this ordinance, which directs the adoption of a pilot for the Executive Drive project. I listened while the town's financial advisor, Mr. Hanley, repeatedly insisted at the council meeting and the workshop meeting the night before that no commercial project in the Route Two Eighty corridor could be successful without tax relief. However, I'm sure Councilwoman McCartney and Councilwoman Williams, who was then a member of the planning board, as well as one or two other council members who were on that Zoom session, will recall the planning board hearing in November when Michael Pesolano, an accomplished and various experienced planner called by Mr. Malanga, gave convincing testimony to the contrary. While Mr. Hanley spoke mainly in generalities, Mr. Pesolano cited data that showed supply in the Route Two Eighty corridor is down, thereby effectively pushing up demand. And he gave specific examples of office buildings in neighboring towns that have successful projects without tax abatements. And then, of course, there's Essex Green, whose developers turned their, turned their back on pilots and still intend to update and upgrade their property. They appear to believe that they can be profitable without a thirty-year tax abatement. The Township Council should not be giving away to a large profitable developer tens of millions of dollars in future tax revenues that will have to be made up by the rest of the tax base. I totally disagree with the position that the town has to do this in order to get a successful development on that site. I believe the owner should pay taxes based on his property's worth, just like the rest of us. And if he doesn't think it's fair, he can always sell the property to someone who can make a go of it, like residents and businesses in West Orange do all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Joe Krokowiac, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Joe Krokowiac, Grandview Avenue. Once again, not comfortable with following up Ms. Silvestri. She's trying to match her eloquence. I'm convinced that many reasons exist to reject the proposed Executive Drive redevelopment plan and the associated financial agreement and payments in lieu of taxes. I spent a lot of time on the council arguing against this and other pilots, which I believe are terribly damaging to the future financial health of West Orange and its, to its taxpayers. Given the time limits on ex-council members, however, I'll just address what I believe are the most important reasons why the council should not only reject this proposal, but should require a totally different process in the future. First, generally speaking, pretty much no collaboration exists between the mayor and his administration and the council on redevelopment. The mayor does all the work, all the deal structure development, all the negotiations, making every last decision. And then the mayor gets the council involved only when the law absolutely requires the council's involvement and authorization. No information is exchanged up to this point, no joint discussions at council meetings, no informational emails, no suggestions from the council, no input on how the process should be structured. Nothing has changed even after the council gets the documentation and discusses aspects of it. The council has all the legal authority to allow redevelopment to proceed. At any point, the council can decide to stop the existing process. It can say that for the process to move forward, it wants to be involved in the preparation, deciding, for example, whether we should have competition to choose the best redeveloper and the best redevelopment project. The council can insist on it, but it doesn't. The council can say it wants proposals from potential redevelopers, both with and without a pilot, so we can weigh the pros and cons of giving away millions of dollars in future property tax revenues. The council can insist on this, but it doesn't. Instead, the council gets a take-it-or-leave-it proposal from the mayor, and that's it. And the deal is sometimes structured, as this one is, with aspects that do not allow for changes, for taking time to consider whether another direction is needed or whether the deal should be changed. As a result, the deal moves ahead without any changes, up or down, yes or no. No, by the way, if you don't approve this, these contingencies will disappear. The council should say no more. The council should say, we are an equal branch of government and we want to be involved in every or most steps of the way. It would be a messier process, probably a longer one, but it will more likely result in a better transaction for our town, certainly one with more support from residents. Second, we don't always need to do a pilot. The mayor argues that all developers require a pilot before a huge investment like this. And in some cases, the property owners appear to let their properties fall into chaos and disrepair and lower property taxes for the town solely to qualify for a pilot through redevelopment. But we don't always need a pilot, in contrast to what the mayor says. All you have to do is look next door at three hundred Executive Drive, which used to be part of this same redevelopment area, but was sold and the owners walked away from redevelopment and a pilot. You can look across the street at Essex Green, where the new owners also walked away from redevelopment and a pilot. Across town, Garden Homes has been trying to invest and build on the West Essex Highlands property for years and never whisper redevelopment or pilot. So we don't have to do a pilot. We may not get as big of a project, but we also won't have to mortgage our future, giving up millions of dollars in future property taxes like we do with pilots. Thirdly, the main reason this is not good for West Orange and should be rejected, perhaps above all others, is fairness. Our state's property tax system is founded on the principle that all taxpayers pay the same tax rate based on the assessed value of their property in their municipality. Everyone pays the same tax rate. And in that way, everyone pays their fair share of the tax revenue needed to fill the budgets of the various governmental units. to fill the budgets of the various governmental units that provide services. It's an equally geared burden. But these redevelopers with pilots don't pay taxes for 30 years. In fact, they pay almost certainly much less than they would if they were paying property taxes during the entire time. They and only they get the deal to sidestep the burden of property taxes. It saves them millions of dollars in costs and actually makes their properties more valuable to a potential buyer. It allows a competitive advantage in competition with properties that pay property taxes. Not only that, but as the property taxes rise to meet governmental financial needs over the 30 years of the tax abatement, it is the property taxpayers that often pay higher taxes than they would otherwise would to make up for the structured pilot payments that don't go up like everyone else's, even when times get tough. It's not fair. We should say no more unfairness and no more pilots unless it's proven absolutely necessary, as determined by a collaboration among all our elected officials with substantial resident improvement. I'm sorry, input. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
At this time, if there's anyone else using the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen? And there is nobody else.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just wanted to respond that to the contrary to what Ms. Silvestri just stated. Planning Board Hearing.
Why?
Mr. Sayers, you're not, you're not muted.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say to the contrary, at the Planning Board Hearing, I disagreed with the research and statements from the testimony Mr. Malanga's planter, planner presented. In this case, I believe the benefits for, for the community outweigh the resistance that Mr. and Mrs. Krokoviac presented.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Do any of my other council colleagues have any questions, comments? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, and glad to hear back from our former colleague tonight and his wife, and I appreciate your, your advocacy towards this, but you mentioned the, the West Essex Highlands. They didn't ask for a pilot, but they, they went after density, major density. And you, you sat through three years of litigation with that. Prior to that, Bel Air, we received land for a school, they didn't ask for a pilot back then because that wasn't the real estate tool of the, of the error. But again, density was, so the trade-off there was more density, more units. And they gave us property for Liberty Middle School. So now we have co-obligations that were, were forced to meet, which we were obligated to meet. And so that now is, you know, that weighs into these situations. And I just get frustrated because, you know, when pilots are mentioned, you know, everybody, you know, we have one in town currently on Main Street. This would be pilot number two. And there's multiple benefits coming to us. And again, co-obligations have to be met. Because if they're not met, they have to be met elsewhere, because we have an obligation. So, you know, years ago, we were faced with density. We do nothing here. We still have co-obligations amongst other items. And if I've been supportive of this project, well, frustrated tonight, but I, I still am. People ask for pilots all the time. We, we don't give them away. When I was council president last year, I received numerous phone calls from developers. I know the mayor always does wanting pilots all over town, you know, we talked about so many times, you know, you know, different open space projects that people want open space, but builders aren't coming to build because they want pilots. And until the mayor approves a pilot, which is, you know, which is always possible, the mayor could approve pilot somewhere else in town. But he hasn't as of now. So this would be pilot number two. We're meeting major co-obligations, we're gaining a senior citizen affordable housing, which is desperately needed. And I shouldn't use the word desperately because we could always figure out another way. But it is a great plan that's before us and I'm proud to support this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilman Rutherford?
Thank you, Council President. I, to former Councilman Krokoviac, thank you so much for your comments. I do agree with him. I think that a better process would yield better outcomes and better results. And I am, I do take my role as a councilperson seriously. And so I think vigorous debate, regardless of how long it takes and who likes it or not, is important. It's important not just for us to vet out these decisions, but for the public to see it and feel and actually be a part of it. I know it's not going to change anything tonight, but I just wanted to express that sentiment. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Williams, did you have any comments? No.
No, thank you.
Thank you. I, I do want to say, just to a point, I, I didn't start off supporting this project. It was through a lot of due diligence over quite some time, where I was able to come to realize the benefits of this project. And I started at a no, and looking at all of the monies that were lost due to the tax appeals, and this is not from this developer, but from the, the owners now, but the owners prior to these, it's, it's, it's it's almost like stopping the bleeding at some point when it comes to, you know, properties like this. I, I did take a look to see how many other pilots we have, and, and we only have the one that, that is on, in Edison. And Edison is now doing so much better, they're 80%, you know, leased. But we're doing double what we were as far as tax revenues are concerned. And that's not, you know, unfortunately, not including any of the leased sales or the, the commercial properties there. I do want to say that, also as a matter of, of practice to former Councilman Krokoviac's statement, with respect to doing things differently, we are doing things differently. While the Edison pilot predates both Councilman Rutherford and myself, we were part of a discussion of how things will change and moving forward, having ideas and participation. But I also want to remind everyone, that, that's really easy to say, however, almost 50,000 residents in this town, and the mayor was elected. And, and, and whether we agree with it or not, it is his job and his responsibility. This is what we elected him for. Yes, we are a governing body. Yes, we can always improve our practices and should always look to improve our practices. There are a lot of things that are being done differently. But I am happy to say that I've seen those changes and look forward to, you know, those, those additional conversations that we are having with the administration. And certainly thank Councilman Rutherford for taking that step in having, organizing a meeting with developers today that hasn't happened in the past, as far as, you know, included council members. But they, they are changing. And, and at the end of the day, with respect to Essex Green, it, it only stands to benefit. And if they have more foot traffic, because there are 425 units right across the street, the better they do, the better our, our commercial ratables do. So I think that, you know, to say that they can do it without a pilot, you know, it's not apples to apples you're comparing. And the benefits of a library, the benefits to, to the community as a result of this pilot, I think outweigh the fact that, you know, and, and I, I can't even understand, well, I do understand where that comes from, saying that, that we're losing millions and millions of dollars, but it's not accurate. We're not generating that revenue at this time. And if, if the council were to vote no on, on this project and the project goes away, then we can continue to sit on, on appeal after appeal after appeal and hope that someone comes along and wants to develop it. How long did Edison sit there? And I, I've been a resident here for 20 years, over 20 years now, and it sat there vacant, almost vacant, and deteriorating. So I, I, I think that this is for me a good project for our community, and it hasn't come through without painstaking discussions and research. So I will stop there and say, Madam Clerk, can we call for a vote, please?
Yes, is there a motion to adopt 2640-21?
I'll move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading. 2639-21 An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 7 Traffic, Subsection 7-32.1, Handicap Parking on Streets, and Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Did you want to have any discussion on that?
I, I did not. Did any of my council colleagues want discussion? Okay, no.
I'm good.
Let me on the call if you want him to describe it.
Is Munny still on?
Yes.
Munny?
He is. I'll send him a little.
Hi, Ms. Lefort, how are you?
There he is.
You're, you're muted.
Oh, you're muted. I got you. You're unmuted now.
You, you've seen many other ordinances like this before, where in residential neighborhoods, especially those where there's multifamily, there's a need for on-street parking as it is, let alone to try and help those that are handicapped. So this ordinance specifically is for a resident of 31 Hazel Avenue, as well as, I think, 14 or 16 Fremont Street to establish handicap parking stalls at those homes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ordinance 2642-21 An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 25 Land Use Regulations of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange to Implement a Settlement Agreement with Fair Share Housing Center. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move. Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. Any of my council colleagues want to have a discussion on this? Now? Madam Clerk?
Okay, pending matters, new matters, council discussion, rent levelling board consensus, consensus appointment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So during our last town council meeting, or I lose track, was it last time or the time before that? Councilwoman Castellino recommended Rodolfo Rodriguez to fill the consensus appointment for the rent levelling board. And she did forward his resume along to us. I hope you've all had the opportunity to review that resume. Council, Councilman, Mr. Rodriguez is a, the chair of the Hispanic Foundation and is a business owner in, in, right off of Main Street and has a lot of contact with the residents in that area and could be a facilitator to those who, who may need assistance in, in accessing any information. So I think that I'd be supportive of Councilwoman Castellino's support of Rodolfo Rodriguez. If anyone had any questions in that regard. President?
Excuse me, I?
Go ahead.
I was going to say the nomination of Rodolfo, I think, is an excellent recommendation. Just knowing his commitment to the community as a business owner in town and as a deputy mayor, how involved he is, I think it would be an excellent recommendation, nomination.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to make note that I do not have any objections to the consensus appointment. However, I would ask that we clarify what the role of the position is clearly and that it be articulated clearly. I did happen to meet in a business transaction, someone who asked me if I knew Mr. Rodriguez and indicated what they thought the new role would entail. It is not, to my understanding, that the definition of what the role and responsibility is was clear. They asked me, would he be handling all of the tenant relations and appointing tenancies to residents in West Orange? So I do just want to urge that, that, that is clear what the role and responsibility is. That was an investor in the community who I have done business with on a frequent basis. So I, I just want to make sure that it is very clear what the role and responsibility of this appointment is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kizer? If you, if you can.
I, I unmuted. And frankly, I don't know that I can define his role at this point. I mean, as I've indicated in the past, the rent levelling board has been basically inactive for a long, long time. So I'm not sure exactly what Mr. Rodriguez is going to do or what the board is going to do. I think that they need to meet and have some discussion, and they're probably going to have to speak with the mayor and so forth. And because if it actually is to be active, again, there would be a need for some sort of budgetary consideration, which is something else you folks are going to be considering soon enough. Because as, as things currently stand, there's, there's really no staff that supports the rent levelling board. So I, I don't want to venture a guess at this point as to precisely what his role would be or what the role of anyone on that board would be.
Council President, may I?
Yes. Council?
Thank you. It, it seems to me, yes, this is a reactive commission, or the rent levelling board has been reacting to if there's ever been a question that raised. I believe that your intention was to make it more of a resource and informational board or commission. So I think in this particular case, if we are talking about Rodolfo, and there are, we are going to try to explain to the community, or the board will have information available to the community, letting them know that there is, in fact, such a board. I think that, again, Rodolfo would serve in that position to, for the community at large. You know, if that, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I feel like that was my takeaway when this resurrect, when this ordinance was resurrected.
So, so when I, when I sought out to see what protections were available to the residents, I found that this ordinance had been dormant, and it actually had language in, in, in the ordinance that said, that called an expiration date, two years from the time it was last adopted. So when I brought it to the mayor's attention, it was to reinstated to make sure that, that there are protections for residents with respect to rent control. Now, because the ordinance was dormant for so long and the board had not met, there have been preliminary discussions of, of what they're doing. And I would like for them, as, as, as Mr. Kizer suggested, and as we've discussed before, for them to meet, come together, review the ordinance, and, and, you know, have some recommendations, whether or not some ordinance language has to be changed or there's a, an advisory board that they want to, you know, spin off of that. I, that is something that I would like the board itself to do. I know that they are not tasked with meeting unless there is a complaint. But in this case, because it's, because it's been in limbo, if you will, for so long, I think that it, it would be incumbent upon the board to, to kind of reassess that, that ordinance. And, and I think with Councilwoman Williams and, you know, knowledge in, in real estate and having with Councilwoman Williams and, you know, knowledge in, in real estate and having expressed interest and now being appointed as the liaison, she can take the lead on that. And hopefully be able to clarify what, what's what with the rent levelling board. Because I agree with, with Mr. Kizer, there is going to be, you know, resources committed. There's a lot of things in the ordinance that require landlords, let's say, to file their leases with, with the municipality. There is nothing within our departments that, you know, there's no system to do that. So those are, those are things that in looking at the ordinance, the board has to consider, how does it move forward? And then, then make those recommendations to, and have those discussions with the mayor, make those recommendations to the council and see how we move forward. So the ordinance called for a consensus appointment, you know, whatever is determined thereafter. If there is no need for one, you know, then, then so be it. But at this point, I think that it's best if the board meet with Councilwoman Williams and have discussions about and do, do their due diligence in that area. So it, do you, Councilwoman Williams, since, since you are the liaison, did you want, what, what is your recommendation? As far as a council consensus appointment, is that something that you want to go ahead with? Do you want to press pause? What, what is your?
No, 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 certainly. I have no objections to the consensus appointment, absolutely.
Okay. So are, are we, do, do we all agree that, that Rodolfo should be, do we need a roll call, Madam Clerk?
I'm gonna do a motion and then a second. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. For pending matters, new matters, I'd like Councilman Rutherford, I'm gonna put you on the spot for a moment, if you will, and share with our council colleagues our discussions and overview, a general overview of our discussions today with respect to the Edison project and Phase Two.
Sure, thank you, Council President. Today was a very exciting meeting. We want to thank the mayor for being so supportive and Council President for spending so much time and all those that were on the call. We are trying to encourage the developers that are in control of the Barton Press lot, the adjacent lots to Barton Press, the current site where our DPW is, the animal control, it's on the same lot as Edison National Museum and is a, the largest lot, undeveloped lot on Main Street in West Orange. Trying to convince them and encourage them to take a different approach. They are open to taking a different approach to development there. We are hopefully going to have something more akin to a town center where we can have more commercial ratables, have some amenities in town that are needed. For those of you that have been around for a while, you may recall that A and P used to be on that lot where CBS is now, don't have a grocery store in that neighborhood. So really, our conversation was not about the actual pieces of the puzzle, so to speak. There was some conversation about that. I'll, I'll get that, to that in a second. But more about the approach. We certainly want to be the, we want to highlight the fact that we are the home of high technology, the home of innovation. This is Thomas Edison's home. That's where he did his work. He built a community around his battery factory that allowed folks to live and work in the same area, walk to work. We want to kind of highlight that story, but tell it in a new way using technology, so high-speed broadband, free Wi-Fi throughout the corridor, looking to incorporate technology with our sidewalks and roadways, lighting, indoor/outdoor spaces, safe, walkable, and create an attraction that allows the residents of West Orange to stay in town and enjoy some of those amenities, spend their money to, but also attract residents from other neighborhoods, other towns to come in and, and spend some time and money in West Orange as well. We're, there's some discussion about the library annex that would be left on Mount Pleasant Avenue as a result of moving the library up to Executive Drive. Hopefully, we'll be able to move the library annex from where it is currently slated to be on Mount Pleasant Avenue to this new spot on the Barton Press lot. And by the way, even though this may sound new, and it sounded new to me, and I've been here for twenty years myself, apparently, the initial plan was substantially similar to what we're trying to accomplish now. So at one point, they were talking about moving the library to, to that space. And we certainly wouldn't want to duplicate what we currently have. So you know, there's a way to do it with a, a heavy focus on technology as part of the anchor for that space. And then there are some great ideas that are coming from the community about how to invest and use that space in a way that makes sense for us as West Orange. So I'm excited about it. I'm grateful that we have the opportunity. I said a moment ago, I supported Mr. Krkoviak's suggestion that there's more input, involvement from council in the process. This is a part of that. And so hopefully, we'll be able to, to come to some agreement. Obviously, we'll, we'll have to share the news with and, and allow for our council colleagues, as well as the community, to be involved and express their opinions. But hopefully, we can come to an agreement that provides a development there that meets the needs of West Orange, helps us revitalize our downtown area, provides a, a reason to stop on Main Street, gives us a safe, walkable space, allows for good parking and better traffic flow. So all of those things will be taken into consideration as we continue to move forward. So yeah, thank you so much. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I certainly was really excited also about the conversations and, and the openness of both the mayor and the developers and their willingness to, to have these discussions and consider a possible change. And these are all, and, and I want to stress to everyone that these are all just preliminary discussions. There is no plan. But, you know, it's a start of a discussion and, and certainly looking forward to the next discussion in that regard.
I'd say, you know what I'd like, Bill, thank you very much, Councilman Rutherford. I think, thanks for the approach. I like that word. And just to spark that conversation. You know, we don't, like our neighbors, we don't have a university like Seton Hall or Montclair State that can, you know, that's a whole population of people coming into your town. But we do have the Thomas Edison National Storage Park, the only municipality in the country that has a national park on their main street. And we have always talked about how to capitalize that. And so I really do want to hear more about what you're suggesting and look forward to that conversation.
Nice work. You, Councilwoman Castellino?
No, no, th- thank you for the conversation with them. You know, I know they were changing the plan. You know, the market for residential right there has changed. And commercial is always beneficial to us, bring more jobs to the community for our residents and also foot traffic for the area. So great job. Thank you.
We still have to move public works.
We still have that.
And, and just, just, I'm sure council members and my council colleagues have seen the emails where the mayor has appointed now the Chair for the Economic Development Commission, which is also a commission that was dormant for some time. And the the commission should be underway and we have to discuss a council appointment and a council consensus appointment. It is not on this agenda, but certainly will be on the next agenda so that there once, once the mayor, the mayor has a couple more appointments, but once that is fully constituted, then they can start meeting. But there is a lot of public interest in that regard. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Just this morning, I know I mentioned this before, the chamber did meet this morning at eight o'clock on a Zoom call. And I did mention that to it because this has been, economic development has been a topic of conversation for a number of years now. So I told them about this newly created, or actually newly reinstated ordinance and suggested if anyone as a business owner here in town, as a chamber member, if they had a bio and a resume to share it so that I can share with my council colleagues for consideration for that consensus appointment. People were interested, you're right.
Okay, yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
So, you know, few of us may have already, because shame on me, I assume this was gonna be set up the same as some of the other commissions, and I thought we would each have our own council appointment. So I know a few of us might have jumped the gun and, and may have asked someone to be our appointments. Is there any? Is there any interest among among all of you or any of you to add any additional? Change the ordinance to add additional appointments to this committee? Or what are your thoughts on that?
I know that the, the ordinance calls for, I believe, I recall, seven, a total, it's a seven-membership Commission. And the mayor, as, as according to the ordinance is written, is, is the only one that appoints. And then we have consensus appointment and a, a council appointment. So I'm, I'm open to the discussion. I, I don't know how much, so, so would you be saying then, instead of having the, the mayor appoint seven, have council appoint?
You know what, let me estimate her, be as all his appointments filled. Maybe we could do it that way, maybe you could take-
He has two more, I think he has two more appointments left to be filled. But certainly, I, I'd probably have that discussion with him first.
Okay.
None.
So I won't get back to you.
Okay, Councilman Rutherford.
Just for clarification, I, I believe the mayor does have five appointments. And then one is a council consensus and one is a council liaison.
Yeah.
And I think one or two of those appointments are statutory. I think like the, the someone from the Downtown Alliance and there may be one other. So not all of those appointees are voting members. So I looked at this commission similarly as the Planning Board. And so, you know, what I spoke about with Councilwoman Castellino earlier was, you know, it's, it's, I don't know what, where the mayor stands on that, and perhaps he is willing, but if he is not willing to give us a council, each council person an appointment, or if we're not willing to override him on that, then perhaps we can just increase the council consensus appointments from one to two. It's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Not a bad suggestion.
Yeah.
Just so you know, the council member serves as a commissioner on this board.
It is a-
And the Downtown West Orange Alliance also gets an appointment. They'll designate a liaison to serve as a non-voting member of the commission.
Okay.
And, and just for all transparency, I, I have asked, when, when the mayor initially talked about reinstating this commission, I expressed my interest and support for council liaison appointment to the Economic Development Commission. So I am looking for support in that regard when we, when, when there is time for an appointment during the next council meeting.
Okay.
Council President, I, I was not aware that this was gonna be discussed tonight, or I would have looked at the ordinance that we have. But I will look at it before there's further discussion, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kizer. Do my council colleagues have any other new business that they? Yes, we did have something else. I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford.
I, I just have a question. I have received some great ideas from residents on a host of different matters. And I'm just trying to understand, as a new council person, how do we address that? Like, how, how do, what is the protocol if a resident has a suggestion or an idea and, you know, wants to get involved? What is the proper, what is the proper way of handling that suggestion? Or, you know, how, how does that work?
I, I think, I'm sorry, did I cut someone off?
Well, Council President, I'm happy to let you answer that if you wish, but I was gonna-
Mr. Kizer.
Look, let's remember that we have a, a, a form of government that is established by the Faulkner Act, which is a state statute. It's a mayor council form of government. It spells out various functions that the mayor has and that the council have. Councilman Rutherford, you know, mentioned something before in, in another, in conjunction with another discussion about the council being a co-equal branch of government. Then truthfully, it's not. It's, it, it's not a junior federal government. It's a, it's, it's a, it's a municipal government and they're totally different. There is case law that talks about there being no separation of powers in municipal government, in the mayor council form of government specifically, but rather a separation of functions. And the Faulkner Act makes the mayor the policy initiator for our form of government. And that's not to say that citizens can't talk to, residents can't talk to council members and, and provide their ideas about the way something should function. I suppose if somebody on the street asked me who they should go to, I would say, talk to the mayor initially because he's the most important person in terms of getting his support. Obviously, he has a veto right, if, if anybody, if the council creates an ordinance. But I, I don't think we should do anything to discourage people from talking to any elected officials. They should be encouraged, I think, to, to speak with all of you. And, and whatever a, a, a citizen indicates to you in terms of an idea about doing something, how to do something, you can obviously speak about those things with your colleagues one-on-one or in a, or in a meeting with all of them. And you can also relay whatever is said to, to the mayor and try to help develop for whatever you want to do with the mayor. I think, that's the best way, I think, I can answer that question. But if, if I haven't answered it, you know, to your satisfaction, let me know.
No, no, you did. I just want to clarify, I didn't say that. That came from one of the public commentators, but, you know, about a co-equal branch, but, but yeah, so, so it's either speak on one-on-one with the council colleagues or elevate it to the mayor.
I, I-
Councilwoman Castellino?
I just want, I just want to add to that. So, Councilman, I always found the best way for approach, if, if a resident came to me, easiest way, I remember this, is like anything administratively, would go straight to the administration. And, or if it's an idea that we could, you know, propose an ordinance, talk to our colleagues first, or you could even, impending matters, if, if there's an idea, you could vet it out here, because we're all here. It's a little easier. A lot of us with our working hours don't always have time to call each, each, each one of us to, to, you know, to pitch an idea or to relay from, from a resident. But this venue right now, impending matters, has always been very helpful. And it's always great to get all of us at, at the same time with administration present, so they can also help guide us on, on a few new ideas. So.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Castellino. And then I, I, I did not want to end the evening, and I almost forgot. We started a conversation, and I know I've heard from each council colleague in different spaces with respect to the year anniversary of COVID and how we wanted to memorialize, you know, and honor those who were lost to COVID. And I want to start this conversation by saying that I am extremely sensitive to Councilwoman Castellino, first and foremost. Because while we've all been impacted, you know, she's lost a parent and that's, that's very difficult. So if we're not ready to have this conversation, I will defer to Councilwoman Castellino in, in this space, out of respect.
Oh, oh, thank, thank, thank you, Councilwoman. You know, we, we talked about this since last year and, and, you know, unfortunately, we're- and and and, you know, unfortunately, we're still here. We're still in this pandemic. And um, I can't believe it, it's going to be a year since um, we met with the coronavirus task force on March, Friday, March thirteenth. And the conversation was, school was going to be let out for two weeks. The school board had this great plan. They were going to let school out for two weeks. She was their vacation days, an extra week. And um, you know, hopefully they would be back and then, you know, focus on how to get all the students set up with some kind of uh, learning from home, a hybrid, and never came to fruition. They just recently, as we all know, just went back this month. And so many are still at home. So it's, it's, it's been a long year and so many people to uh, thank from the community and our staff for working so hard. And um, you know, I will, you know, we've been talking about meeting publicly, which is also still hard, I guess, when the weather breaks. We had a lot of people come out to Ospac safely last year. So hopefully we could do something safely this spring, um, into early summer, depending on the numbers. Whether we light a candle, um, what what, you know, there's so many different ideas being pitched by many of you. Our rec- our rec- um, our Billy Q from the rec department. He had pitched candles on Cable Lake over by Rock Spring would be pretty. Invite the families up. So something, I know Councilwoman Williams had thought of a video this week. And which is also a nice idea. I'm not sure, you know, with the time constraint. But we do have to do something and hopefully it could be something in in person. I know the families would want to express being unfortunate. Uh, for those who don't know, I lost my mom on uh, this past January, right after the holidays and from coronavirus. And a lot of, a lot of folks don't know that. And that was very difficult for our family. So I know as a family member, um, it would mean a lot if if you could have that closure. Because you don't have closure when your family member dies in a hospital bed watching the nurse and God bless all these healthcare workers. They need to be commended for being with your family, holding your family's hand while you're looking at your, your phone. So um, I think something personal, getting folks out there together would be very, a sense of closure for the community. So I would advocate for, for something of that nature.
I I think that we can ha- start having these discussions, right? Because it is a year, we're not out of it, you know. Unfortunately, today we just lost someone else.
Yeah.
We certainly want to start that dialogue um, with with us. Councilwoman Williams, I saw your hands.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So um, in consultation with um, our Public Information Officer and historian, Mr. Joe Fagan, um, it is my sole sincere desire for us to do something in person. However, um, with, and 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 certainly a candlelight vigil was my um, vision of how we can memorialize those who have been impacted by this disease. Uh, but with us not being able to meet, um, it was Mr. Fagan's recommendation since that the public is used to seeing us in a Zoom format, um, that we do do some type of video presentation, very short, very quick. Um, just speaking each of us from our heart, um, to to just acknowledge the fact that March fourteenth was the date of our first COVID case in in our community. And so I would ask that each of you, um, just give uh, Mr. Fagan a couple of minutes of your time so he can put something together. Um, and it can be um, in an effort to memorialize the loss that each of our residents have occurred, have incurred, um, due to this COVID nineteen pandemic. That we just do something. I I would, I just feel and have heard um, from so many residents that we have to do something. We just cannot allow uh, this, this occasion to pass without us acknowledging it. And so there in lie the recommendation and suggestion. Um, I am absolutely supportive. I, there were two hundred and eighteen deaths effective last Friday. Now there are two hundred and nineteen um, in West Orange. I wanted to do something where we have a candle vigil for each of those residents represented by someone and their family if possible. And if not, um, then we again, as council colleagues, stand in on their behalf. But but each and every resident um, of our community who has succumbed to this pandemic should be acknowledged, should be recognized. This hardship is so much more than anyone can imagine. Whether you have been impacted by the personal loss of a loved one or just someone you know in this community. I I just feel if we do not do something, um, it would be to our disadvantage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. One of the, one of the other things, and 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 this is my perspective. Uh, one of the other things that um, I I have seen, because it's just doing research as to what other municipalities are doing, other states are doing. New York created a database where, because not everyone who has been impacted is comfortable or wants their story or their name read or, but they did start a database where they welcome the community to upload pictures of their loved ones with a short story so that, you know, people could see faces and read stories. And actually, you know, that that that's, to me personally speaking, that's more of an impact um, in memorializing and honoring those that we lost than than hearing me speak um, at on a video. That, that's my personal perspective. Um, and I certainly want us to get together to do something when the weather is 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 better. Um, I I don't want to do something rushed. I know that March fourteenth was the first date, but certainly unfortunately, clearly not the last date. So I I I also thought that perhaps the HRC and the PRC could come together and work on on this with us. Um, I know Councilman Rutherford, I just saw you unmute yourself. Did he freeze? I think he's froze. Oh, there you are. No, he's still there.
Yeah, I missed that. You were frozen on my side. Sorry.
I saw, I saw you unmute, mute yourself, so I was just giving you the space.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. So um, this is a particularly difficult thing for me. You know, in my circle, um, you know, we've lost quite a few to COVID. And COVID has impacted even uh, folks that didn't die from COVID, but just died during the pandemic. And so there's just a lot of grief that um, many of us are carrying. And I think it's important for us to gather publicly together. I know we're still in the pandemic, so it has to be done in a safe way.
Yeah.
But, you know, outdoors, weather's warming up. Allow for a moment of peace, uh, reflection and give um, those of us that are carrying that grief an opportunity to put it down. So that the, the real healing can begin.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stop talking now because this is a sensitive topic for me.
Yeah.
But I I I think we need to, we have to handle this with grace, compassion, love, neighborly support. Um, you know, in my faith tradition, we're taught to bear together with one another in love. And I think this is a moment where we really have to honor that. So um, I had tried last year to put together a vigil with Reverend Platt from Nia Fellowship. We couldn't settle on a date. And then it got to be cold, so we couldn't do it outside. So we put that on the shelf, but um, he and I have been speaking about it. Um, and I'm certainly interested in doing something as the weather warms up where we can, you know, finally put some of that burden down. And, you know, for those of us that are in in, you know, for those West Orange residents that are in that same boat, it is important that they have an opportunity to put it down. So the grief, the burden that they've been carrying, put it down and then begin the healing process. So, so, you know, I, the video, I'm not, these events aren't mutually exclusive. And, you know, but I do think it's important that we do something in person.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm gonna stop talking there. Thank you.
I I totally agree, totally agree. I'm sorry, Council President, for the interruption, but I I, we have, I I am absolutely in agreement that this has to be um, something that we do all together. In addition to any other um, opportunity that we have to give people an opportunity to just recognize the loss. But yes, we must all come together at some given point, opportunity when it is safe and recognize um, that that people do need to heal.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, I think it was beautiful when you talked about, um, seeing New York City doing the picture and a story. It just brought this image that every year now, um, the township celebrates the compassionate friends. It's a worldwide, the first Sunday in December. Compassionate Friends is where you remember a lost child or brother or sister. And um, that was started with the Badlani Foundation. And we have been doing that at Degnan Park on the, actually floating the candles on uh, Vincent's Pond. The idea, there would be a whole lot more space at Cable Lake to pick up on Recreation Director Keough's idea. There, again, one hundred and thirty-eight acres for us to um, to actually create something safe and memorable um, for the community. I think that would be a beautiful idea.
And excuse me, a- and uh, the reason why I started having the conversation with Mr. Keough is I was asking him about the completion of Degnan Park and the timing of it. And he he definitely recommended, uh, and Rock Spring is just so, um, you know, that the whole, it's just so comforting, just that that beautiful area there, so.
Very serene.
It was a great, it was a great recommendation by him.
Okay, so looking at the time now, it is eleven o'clock. You know, we're always.
We have one more pending matters. Um, this was, I know I shared, the League of Municipalities had shared a, or the Madam Clerk had shared an email from the League of Municipalities about uh, New Jersey voters improving uh, question, public question number one about the legalization of marijuana. And we received that letter about how township does have to act. There are six classes of marketplace um, where licensing these businesses. What my recommendation is, is that we as the council send a letter of recommendation to the planning board to um, look for zoning regulations on the six classes or to be a cultivator, manufacturer, wholesaler, distributor, retailer, delivery. We know what parameters or what is it that we want to uh, see on how to regulate any of those uh, categories.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. And to follow up, I did reach out to um, Attorney Mark Moon who did the original ordinance and asked him to um, look back um, on the new legislation and um, bring counsel up to speed with some information for us to consider as well. I don't know, Mr. Kizer, does zoning do this first or does the ordinance happen?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not thoroughly familiar with with the new law. I confess it's, you know, but I I do believe that Mr. Trank's firm and perhaps Mr. Moon is one of the people who have been trying to gain some expertise in this area. You know, I, they want to have a section in that firm, I think, that deals with these issues. So I I I would probably leave it to Rich in the first instance to to look into this um, and to respond. But uh, it clearly, it's an issue that we're going to have to deal with as a township and um, we need to know as much as we can, you know, and make our decisions and they should be educated decisions. So I I can get in touch with Mark and and ask him about that and with Rich. Um, and we'll be more prepared at a later meeting to to address these things.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Do any of my uh, uh, council colleagues have any other um, new items? Councilwoman Williams, I saw you.
Yeah, I I I see Mr. Gross is waving his hands, so I'll yield to him.
Mr. Gross?
Oh, just, I just want to go back to um, Councilman Rutherford's uh, concern about what to do when he gets suggestions and and recommendations from the public. And and certainly one of the things that that can be done is pick up the phone and give us a call and share with us. Especially if it's an operational issue. Um, you know, we we we, we're we're always interested to know, you know, what what the ideas are out there. If we don't think it's a good idea, we'll talk to you about why. If we think it's a good idea, if we, we hadn't thought of it, we're gonna say, we'll look into it. And and sometimes you might even find, we really are doing it. It it's just being interpreted perhaps differently. So so I I, just as a matter of suggestion, because at the end of the day, uh, I think was was said before, the i- the idea is is to to move everything forward and and, and if we could, we could make changes because of a suggestion, somebody get, picks up the phone and calls us and talks to us about it or, or, you know, we're we're willing to listen and 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 do things because, you know, we're we're, we're not stuck in the, we've always done it this way mode. We're, we're all about doing things more efficiently, uh, better and covering all the bases. So uh, and and I think it'll be helpful both ways. Uh, we certainly can get, if if we, if it is something we run up against, we can at least express why we haven't been able to do it. If it's, you know, there there may be other factors that maybe aren't being considered. So, or like I said, maybe we haven't thought of it and and we'll pick it up and run with it if you give us a suggestion. So um, that, I just wanted to add that to the mix.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And I I have to attest to the not being stuck and this is the way we do things. The administration has been incredibly supportive with so many different initiatives. Um, I I've, you know, I'm very grateful. So thank you for adding that. Councilwoman Williams?
Just wanted, before we ended um, tonight's meeting, uh, we we didn't really come to a conclusion about the video. So do we want to move forward with the video or are we opposed to the video? What is our status so that uh, Mr. Fagan will know what he needs to do?
Um, personally, it's hard for me to, to do a video. Um, but if the rest of yous want to do it, it'll be hard for me to get something.
Totally understood, given your immediate loss. Um, totally understood, totally understood.
I think if we did a video, it would have to include so many people, not just the council, but I think the OEM office, the Health Department, uh, there's, there's too many people, so many people that have been actively involved, the cert team.
I think, I think he described it to me best by saying, um, because again, I pushed for us to do something on a much grander scale that was much more community inclusive. And um, his response to me, unfortunately, he's not able to speak um, on his own behalf. But his response to me, when I came up with the grandiose idea of mentioning names, including families, was let's not lose sight of what the occasion is on March fourteenth. Um, March fourteenth is just acknowledging um, the fact that it is, has been a year since our first case was acknowledged. It is not the appropriate time for us to do the community um, acknowledgement. And so that was why, again, with me oppositional and pressing to do more, um, he said, keep it simple. And so if you would just refer back to his proposal, um, the ESP proposal, I I think it would clarify what his intent is. And certainly, um, with the support of the mayor, us as council colleagues and the community, we do want to do something much more grandiose in person and on a much larger scale that will include all of those. But on this occasion, we're just trying to say, hey, we're here, we're with you in community. Um, and we will not ignore the fact that our, our, our residents have been impacted.
I think that could serve, like, we talked about a proclamation. I think having a proclamation um, at a council meeting could, could actually serve that purpose. And then plan on something, if we choose Rock Spring or Cable Lake, plan on something there.
Absolutely.
Is it possible for us to have a pro- proclamation prepared and then publish on the fourteenth?
That's, that comes from the mayor's office. So you'd have to discuss it with the mayor.
Okay, what's today? Today's the ninth. I'm sure, I'm sure that that can be done, but we, certainly we um, we can reach out to him. And and honestly, with a, you know, at this time, um, a video with just four council members and the mayor is not, I I don't think, it's not something that I would feel comfortable doing. I think we should wait on the video. Um, certainly, the video is a great idea. But for the fourteenth, just to have a, a video done, you know, minus one of us, I think is not the best way to proceed. That, that's my opinion.
Do you have a, a proclamation on for the fourteen? There's no meeting until the twenty-third. So would it be presented at the twenty-third meeting?
Oh, could it be something that we could actually just publish on our township website if we're going to do a proclamation? I, I just, I, I'm speaking and, and I, I hear our desire and our need. But I'm also speaking on behalf of the residents who I do know personally and who have come to me personally and said, we've done nothing. And so right now we're still at a point where we're doing nothing. And we've been a year into this. So I, I am really speaking on behalf of those who have come to me and just said, can we in community acknowledge that we've been going through this for a year?
I think we can do that with a proclamation on the twenty-third, which is really a week later.
Councilwoman Casalino, say your hand up.
Yeah, you know, I mean, to say we've done nothing, um, you know, we, like all last year, we were bringing in and honoring people not so long ago. These past few, you know, couple of months have been crazy with, with agenda items. So it's been tough, but, um, and maybe that's why the meetings were so long last year, but that's what, you know, we were doing. And, um, you know, we did have a video for the seniors that we made. And I know you're saying, Councilwoman, it, it is a year, but a lot, a lot of people still feel like we're still in it. We're not there yet. Um, so it's all debatable, but it, I just can't believe it's a year already. It's, 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 it's just, you know, uh, uh, my thing is if we're going to do a video for the fourteenth, it's going to be rushed. And it's, you know, it's just going to be, I don't know, just like not enough, even I hear what you're saying to do something. We started this a couple of weeks ago, but I just feel like it's just, I don't know. I don't know.
Councilwoman Rutherford, I'm sorry, Council.
So my hesitance, my, my hesitancy with the video is like, this is a moment that requires, uh, uh, at least it should allow for some healing. And when we're speaking at people, I don't think that we create the space for that. I think we need to be speaking with people. Um, and then, you know, also for me personally, look, you know, I get emotional when I talk about this stuff. So for me to do a video is not going to be easy.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I will go along with what the council agrees to. Uh, but you saw a moment ago, I had to maintain my composure. I, this is where I am. Like this is a real thing for me. And I just don't want to, I don't want to put someone else in the position that I am now where they, where the wound is open and they don't have someone there to share it with. They don't have someone there to bear that with or to, to express it. So that's my hesitancy and, you know, maybe I'm alone in that, but that, I, I, I don't want to project. I want to, I want to build, I want to be together. I want to, you know, have a moment where we exhale and let some of that stuff go. Uh, you know, versus send it out there and then folks are sitting at home and they watch it and they have no one to, to grieve with or they, maybe they do and they're all grieving. You know, they opened up a can of worms and now they've got to deal with that on their own. I, I would rather us do that as a collaborative effort. Community wide, or at least as, as much as possible, given the circumstances.
And, and just one last thing, the, the video we did for the seniors, um, I mean, that took a, a couple of weeks and we put a lot of pictures in there and, you know, it, 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 but it took a while to create to, to, and, and it was really cute. Um, not to say that we're all not cute, but it, it, it's, it was a different, you know, it, it, uh, it took a while to put together. It, 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 it's a lot of, you know, it, I don't think we have the time to get it done for the fourteenth. So can the mayor just go do something on his, like say something? He's always go with these videos and make a statement. I mean, he did tonight, maybe something a little more elaborate.
Or, or I think, I don't know. I mean, the, if ten, ten, waiting ten days for our next council meeting where we do read it and, and publish it, I, I don't, uh, and, and again, my personal perspective, I, I don't know that ten days would make a difference. Um, the fact is that, you know, we want to acknowledge it. We want it to be significant and meaningful. Um, and I, I just feel that, you know, expressing our, our thoughts on a video, um, to me loses that significance. But that's.
And with Councilwoman, uh, Council President, what about having members of the coronavirus task force come to the next meeting, say a few words, maybe?
So let's do this. It is after eleven. I, I, yeah, I want to consider everyone's time. I know it's been already long enough, but we can offline, um, through email, obviously not all together, but you know, two or three of us, uh, well, two of us, um, and then we can relay information um, that way and coordinate how, how we can best do this, um, share some links, share some ideas. Um, and, and certainly don't want, um, Councilwoman Williams to think that she's not supportive.
No, because it was a good idea.
Um, it, it is. We have to acknowledge it. Um, we have to do something. I just, um, don't feel personally that a video is going to, to fill that void um, with compassion. And I think that, um, rushing it, um, i- is just even less effective, but certainly, um, want to be able to support other efforts to do something with some time, um, enough time to plan.
And no offense to, to Mr. Fagan. I, I, I mean, I don't mean to, you know, that's
No.
that, that's, you know.
Thank you for saying that. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll offline about this, um, amongst ourselves and, um, if there's nothing else, can I?
Is there a motion to adjourn? Yes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you for hanging out.
Good night, West Orange.
Thank you. This is to, this is for everyone that when I end the meeting, it will be, uh, and for both those on screen and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.